Again, Sam, we're glad you're here. And we hear and read some things, but I promise you, every board member knows that folks that are here, that you'll have concerns and will listen to you. So you may get, those that are speaking tonight, you'll get three minutes, but we have other times and other... Think about us, we're working folks that's out there doing stuff just like you are. I've got several different jobs, a family, and served at church and other places, and I'm serious about that, but I take time from my community too. So don't go to somewhere and gather up and say these folks won't listen, because I promise you, they will. All right. I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Department Code, Chapter 5, Bible 1. At this time, we need a motion to start it by the agenda. It's made by Brooke, seconded by Robert, all four. That's seven oh. At this time, again, will you lead us in a prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, I just thank you for allowing us all to gather here tonight, Lord, and I want to thank you for a great start to the school year and your protection over our school and our students. And right now, Father, I want to pray your word over this room for the board members and the people in here. That wisdom come into our hearts, knowledge be pleasing to our souls, let discretion watch over us, and understanding guard us. In your name I pray, amen.
Can I be blessed to have some of our FFA students? Fifth Worries is National FFA Month, and our FFA officer has actually joined us here for a meeting. They sit beside us, we take a little extra time and kind of show them what's going on, and mess with them a little bit, but they're going to lead us in a prayer tonight, and then they've got, or excuse me, they lead us in a pledge, and then they'll bring us to, they're going to go somewhere else to do some service for something local. So ladies?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one nation.
Thank y'all. And are we okay? Is he not trying to walk with me? All right, special recognition is campus support of the month.
Okay. The good part of the meeting here, we get to recognize some of our employees for phenomenal work and that their campuses are recognizing them for. And so we are going to start first with the elementary teacher of the month. And if I could have Ms. Shelby McAdoo come forward, please. Right here in front of everybody. Largest board meeting we've had in several years, just for you, that's right. All right. Says Ms. McAdoo brings her best to school every day. Both students and staff alike want to be around her, as her positivity and dynamic energy are infectious. Shelby's leadership skills and eagerness to succeed make her an asset to our team. Star design, no big deal. She is dedicated to professional growth and tackles every challenge head-on. Shelby has initiated her own learning and shared with other teachers to make sure all third grade students are prepared for the new assessment. Her strong organizational skills, content knowledge, and solid routines and procedures in the classroom is the ultimate recipe for student achievement. In addition, she truly cares for her students, is a natural at building relationships. Ms. McAdoo is a game changer. So our elementary teacher of the month, Ms. Shelby McAdoo. Want to say anything? No. I think part of what is, they say so much during the day, they get to in front of this crowd, and they just don't want to say anything. All right, next, we're going to do the middle school teacher of the month. If I could have Mr. Mark Bates come forward. Since Mr. Bates is an outstanding teacher and coach, he is always available to help any student, including students who may need assistance outside his teaching assignments. If he doesn't feel he knows the correct response for a different subject, he is quick to find someone who has the answers. Mark is also a tennis coach, outdoor adventure teacher, and science teacher. He fills in as bus driver when transportation has a shortage, and is always willing to step in to assist in tutoring students anywhere there is a shortage. He tutors students in all grade levels and steps up to cover all school detentions while assisting students make better choices and supervises them while doing their assignments. Mark takes his commitment to Mount Vernon ISD very seriously. He can always be counted on to assist our students in any way. When asked if he could help out, his response is always, "I would do whatever you need, just let me know how I can help." Mark is a valuable team member to the middle school staff. Mark goes above and beyond the defined boundaries of his duties and responsibilities. With all of the extra things he does each week, he is always well-prepared for each class and relies on kindness and structure in every lesson. Mark takes time to develop and implement a creative instructional strategy and approach to his lessons, all to ensure the success of his students. His colleagues eagerly send out compliments on him for assisting with lessons, computer issues, and numerous other kindnesses. Mark serves as a positive role model and leader on our campus. He has the ability to build relationships and encourage students both academically and socially, well beyond the job requirements. We are very fortunate to have Mark as a valued member of our middle school team. Middle school teacher of the month for this month, Mark Bates. Very good. Want to say anything?
Glad y'all all came out.
Since we do have such a large crowd, let me take this opportunity to mention something about his as a bus driver. We do need bus drivers. So if any of you would like to go get your CDO, or if you don't, if you already have it, please get in touch with Mr. Bobby Thompson, because we could always use some bus drivers. It is a very rewarding job. Right, Mr. Bates? Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to recognize our high school teacher of the month. If I could have Ms. Stephanie Dixon come forward, please. She brought her entourage tonight, so that's right. Says Ms. Dixon has established herself as an integral part of the staff at Mount Vernon High School. On a daily basis, she works incredibly hard to deliver high-quality instruction to her students in her various animal science ag classes. Ms. Dixon has demonstrated a desire to consistently improve her teaching practices and is quick to accept feedback, seek out professional development, and collaborate with colleagues in order to better herself and her students. Outside the classroom, Ms. Dixon always handles her professional responsibilities in a timely and efficient manner. In addition to being an excellent classroom teacher, she works countless extra hours outside of school time, leading various FFA leadership events and competition teams. She works with young farmers and future ag students by volunteering with 4H and area animal shows. In addition, she spends much time finding ag-related scholarship opportunities for students, along with overseeing students compete at state and national levels of FFA. In addition to all our duties already, Ms. Dixon has demonstrated a desire to grow her leadership capacity in the area of CTE, and has begun assisting the CTE director in a number of areas, including planning, compliance, programs of study, and certification. Ms. Dixon is the number-one supporter for all her students, and she has a way of connecting with her students, and they are quick to respond to her leadership. She is an excellent communicator with administration and peers alike, and can always be counted on to help with any extra duties that are necessary. She has a genuine desire to see her students succeed, both in and out of the classroom. We are fortunate to have Ms. Dixon as a member of the Mount Vernon High School staff, and she is very worthy of being named teacher of the month for the Mount Vernon High School. Want to say anything?
I'm just really glad that all of you are here. Honestly, these students right here are my driving force each and every day, and what you have to say tonight, I don't know if you know this, but we have a competition that's actually called Agricultural Issues, and we get to use what's going on right here in this county as our subject material for some of our competitions. So I really am going to value the words that you have to say tonight, and I appreciate everybody that's able to come. Thank you.
And now we get to recognize probably one of the hardest-working employees we have in Mount Vernon ISD, and a very important person, especially when it comes to football season and tickets. Because she fields lots of phone calls and lots of questions, especially, "When are we going to sell?" Right? If I could have our, this month, month of October, support member of the month, Ms. Michelle Cupid, if you'll come forward, please. Ms. Cupid is more than deserving of being honored as auxiliary employee of the month for Mount Vernon ISD. She is a tireless worker and can be counted on 100% of the time to take care of all her daily responsibilities and any additional things that pop up on any given day. She handles subs, purchasing, grades, senior activities, football tickets, and many other duties, including Mr. Glover. No, I added that. I added that. Everyone in Mount Vernon High School knows that if they have a question, then Ms. Cupid is the person who can probably get them answers. She is a pleasure to work with and always has a positive demeanor with staff, students, and parents. We are extremely fortunate to have Michelle to continue to be a part of our team at Mount Vernon High School and thankful for all that she does. Our monthly support member of the month, Ms. Michelle Cupid. If I could have all recipients come back up, we'll get a picture with the board here real quick. Is she going to scoot in? You can get to right in the middle.
Here I am, sorry.
We good?
At this time, we dismiss the, hopefully, teachers have left plans to go do. Ms. Cupid's got to go do Mr. Glover's job for a few hours here, so at this time, we'll do our open forum with comments. So we have about 20 of these, we're doing three minutes apiece, and we're going to do a, you get three minutes, and watch the clock, because Dr. McCullough will have it facing you up here, so that we don't have to call you down, because when three minutes are up, we're calling somebody else up. I'll probably, to keep it moving on pretty fast, we will, I'll probably tell you who's on deck next. Matt, can you get a chair, because we're going to be here a good hour for this, hour and 10 minutes, and then we're going to have a couple hours or two with this, the next agenda item, so do you need a chair?
I'll sit on the floor if I need to.
If we didn't have a chair around here, we'll...
He's just standing at a log game, it's okay.
Okay, great. So we'll start off with Clint Whitworth, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then next on deck will be Larry Kelman. So we have a podium over here, there's a non-directional light here, the crowd can't hear you from that, but this will pick up on our camera for our...
Whenever you're ready. We have collected over 800 signatures in a little over a month in opposition to these solar complexes. From my understanding, 775 of these signatures are from tax-paying residents of our county. I can only imagine how many more we would have by now if the county taxpayers were informed of the solar complexes when they were first proposed. I also understand that last month, on the 12th, the school board approved an amendment to expand these solar complexes, even after we brought concerns to the school board and had a lot of questions that were unanswered. I'm kind of curious on why we would do that, I know this isn't a question-and-answer forum, but basically, what I really want to say is, dirty green energy is not wanted in this county. It's unreliable, it's inefficient, and if you don't believe me, just look what's about to happen in Europe. I mean, they shuttered their coal power plants, they shuttered their nuclear plants, Putin cut off the spigot, and their solar grid can't keep up. Now they're scrambling to get their coal-fired power plants back up, their nuclear power plants back up, and why would we want to bring that into this county when it really has no benefit for the county as a whole? Yes, the school district's going to get some money, and that's great, but really, this is going to take up thousands of acres of land in this county, and yes, the homeowners and the landowners, they do benefit from it, but the rest of us don't benefit from it. I'm not saying I want to benefit from it, but are we really willing to let our county be changed for decades for these solar projects? And we still don't have any answers. We don't have any answers on where the water's coming from, who's going to dispose of the panels when they break, if there's a tornado, a hailstorm, kids with BB guns. We don't have any of these answers. There's toxic chemicals in these batteries and in these panels. The batteries, you need special firefighting equipment to put out. Do we have that in this county? We don't. Who's going to pay, who's going to pay to buy the new, the hazmat equipment and the special fire suppressant that we need to put these batteries out if they catch on fire? Just last week, in Monterey County, California, there was a fire at a battery storage facility, and the local sheriff had to tell the citizens to shelter in place, shut your windows, turn off your air conditioner, and do not come out until we come and knock on your door and tell you it's safe. Luckily, that county had enough money that they had the proper fire equipment that they paid for to put the batteries out. So these are all things that we need to consider. I understand $34 million is a lot of money. I'm sure that, you know, the homeowners and landowners stand to make a lot of money, but is money really worth it? Is it really, really worth it? Because we're going to put our future in inefficient, unreliable energy that is also toxic. So I mean, that's really all I have to say, and I just hope that, you know, everybody would think hard about this and take everybody that's going to speak today's opinions into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be Josh Flowers after Mr. Kelman.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk. Basically, a lot of what I feel is the same as the gentleman before me said, but I cannot see for the life of me how putting that plant is of any benefit to the people in Franklin County, period. Why should I say that? Because the farmers that are going to sell, release their hand, they're going to make a lot of money of it, but for the general tax-paying public of the county, I can't see any benefit to it, and I do know how to look at businesses. My rental business was for 25 years, and it was a very successful business in Dallas. But the contract that we're going to make money of it and then put it up there, you're probably also going to get a kickback from the government, because the government seems to kick back to people that do things for the ex-so-called economy and for the ecology of the country. They always want to kick back money, so they're trying to get a kickback there. But as far as all of us that are sitting in this room, the general taxpayers, I can't say it's of any benefit to any of us, and I urge you to vote against giving any tax rate to them. But sooner or later, as a school district, you're going to need money, and that means it's going to have to get extra tax increases for everybody in this room.
Josh Flowers?
Hi. I'm new to the county, but I will tell the new this, the solar farms that were where I came from, I've seen what they do, what they look like, very cool, but I know with state law that you can only have 800 acres of solar farm, even though it's 5,000 acres that they're asking. Why do I know this? Because it's near me. So really, what I want to know is, how many years is it going to be there? When does it start? How long is it going to be? How much are you, you're really going to be having for the school district after three years? If it was in something else, say, development for a subdivision, wouldn't we have more for the school district and the county? So, you know, overall, there's only a couple employees going to be there. 200 at first, but they get fired, they're temporary workers, they don't stick around. Also, these solar farms can't go bankrupt, and they'd be taken over foreclosed. One near Wise Grove right now has been foreclosed three times, and it's left in disarray. So personally, I don't really want to see that. I'd rather see something else go in there. I understand agriculture is really a big component of it, but really, to think there's ways we can do more for the county and for the school district. The other is, what's the property value for those neighbors for, for resale? That's, I mean, that's one thing else that a lot of people don't understand, don't look at. You don't really get a lot. No one wants to go buy, we live by a solar farm. The other is, what kind of environmental impacts are going to be happening? What's going to happen if birds that fly over? What about, you know, you put up a big fence around it, what happens to the rest of the deer that were there? Where do they go? So I think those are things that need to be thought about. If this company can come in and do stuff, why do they need a tax rate? Why not just do it, just build it? Don't need anything. You would get more in return if they just built it and you taxed it. Your taxes would be a lot more, more relevant for the school district and for the county. So the other is, is those landowners that this is on, they have to pay three years back taxes. So for that landlord, I'm not sure I want to pay that three years' worth. Why is that guy? So that's what I've got to say. I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Mr. Barker.
I think mine is fairly positive in short. For getting about solar fields, my first question is, why do we always need money? We may want a lot of things, but what do we actually need? And I'm speaking for the people and students of Mount Vernon, Franklin County, Texas, including you, our school board. I'm sure the folks of Franklin County would love to hear shopping lists. I've also, I've heard AstroTurf for the football field, move the home stands, et cetera. Maybe y'all have listed those things, and I, somewhere in I missed it. My mother told me, if I bathed and wore clean clothes, I'd always be just as good as anyone. Our school system and physical plan is something like that. Keep it running smooth and clean, as you're doing now with maintenance in good direction. You and your system has produced some good and great and exceptional people that we can all be proud of, and we have always produced those folks with what we have had at the time. Our school system has produced doctors, lawyers, and Indian chiefs. Okay, maybe no Indian chiefs, but many great athletes, scholars, aviators, politicians, judges, and generals. And I repeat, we have done it all with what we were working with at the time. Let's make the best use of what we have, and we can still be proud of our school. Thank you.
Next up is Brooke Green.
My name is Susan Olson. Born in Dallas, recently returned to the land and free to find this. I want to say that in previous life, this was my line of work. These folks here from NL, and attorneys who are doing the work, any other project sponsors here, have heard every single argument, every single criticism, every single word that we could think of as normal, everyday citizens to oppose something like this. And believe me, because I used to do this for a living, we have nice, half answers. But all you really need to know about what they think of you and your level of understanding is in this nice little handout we got, utility-scale solar. On the last page, at the very top, it says, "Can the project move forward without county approval?" Listen to how this sentence is structured. If the county is not zoned, there are no permitting requirements for the project beyond state and federal permits, and they throw in, including stormwater management. So what that says is, they don't need your state impairment. They have no answers for you. They're here to be polite under guise of listening to local concerns. And I suspect the school board is as well. Shame on you, shame on you, shame on you. I don't want this in my county, I don't want this in my state, and I'm going to fight you every step of the way. Thank you.
No more of that. If somebody says, "Shame on me," we're up here, I told you, we're going to listen to you, but I'm up here to get the facts, just like y'all are. I don't know the facts yet, I'm working my tail off to get them.
So I'm...
Shame on me later, but don't, shame on this board that's up here doing this. We normally don't answer that, but I'm proud of y'all for taking these calls. You're getting threats, you get the right kind of threat, we'll address it, but just keep on praying about it, keep on keeping on. Yes, ma'am?
Yes. I'm Ruth Green, and I originally came to this area from the state of California, and I'm very proud of the last six years of living here in Franklin County. I love everything about it. One thing I don't want to look at is California. And in California, all these solar panels, the big windmills, all of it, they're having nothing but problems with them. So I second everything that everyone has said here, and I also thank the community for coming out, and thank you guys for listening to us.
Next up is Tom Austin.
I'm going to pass.
Okay. After that would be Ron Davis.
First of all, I want to thank the board for giving us the time to address you. I know you guys are dedicated to our kids, and I know that we pay you a magnificent salary to sit up here and listen to this, so y'all are having fun, right?
We got a bottle of water.
My name is Sandy Cash. I live in the north part of the county, 813 Northeast County Road, 2120. It's in Taoco, but it's in the big city of Pegginsport, which is a suburb of Nikor. In all fairness, I'm a retired civil servant, so I spent all my career doing this type of thing, economic development. I would also tell you, in interest of transparency, no one has talked to me about my land. I haven't spoken to no one, so I have no interest in that direction. Now, what I want to mention real quick is, first of all, I say I'm really not in favor of economic development, that's on principle. I did that stuff for 25 years in the city of Irving, and I saw how it worked, and it never worked the way it was intended to work. And so on philosophy, I don't like it. Let me say, this is really a tax issue, it's not a land use issue. Sue Riley pointed out, in the state of Texas, unless, there are only a couple of instances where the county has zoning authority out in the county, that is, authority to tell you what you can use your land for. So Franklin County doesn't have that. This county commissioners cannot tell you, you cannot put a chicken house here, or you cannot put a, you know, a boarding house here. They don't have that authority. And likewise, they don't have the authority to say, "You can't put a solar farm out here." That's the way Texas is. But by default, you ladies and gentlemen, you have the pleasure of being the focal point in this argument, which is really a tax. Section 313 of the state code says that the school district has the ability to grant certain tax relief, okay? And if they don't grant that, then you don't, I assume, they don't get their money. Now, I will tell you that there are federal tax incentives that are fairly substantial. You had those, the local tax incentives, and that's a lot of money. That's why they're coming to you, to talk to you. They could do this without coming here. They could go and get their permits and start building tomorrow. All they have to do is work out the contracts with the individual owners. So one other fact, 313...
Six seconds, Sandy.
313 expires December, the last day of December this year, and the 82nd legislature decided not to renew that law, and they did it for a reason, because it wasn't working like they intended it to. incentives that are fairly substantial. You had those, the local tax incentives, and that's, that's a lot of money. That's why they're coming to you, to talk to you. They could do this without coming here. They could go get their permits and start building tomorrow. All they have to do is work out the contracts with the individual owners. So, one other fact, 313-
Six seconds, Sandy.
313 expires December, the last day of December this year, and the 82nd legislature decided not to renew that law. And they did it for a reason, because it wasn't working like they intended it to.
Well, thank you, school board, for appearing us tonight. Let me say that I've spent over 44 years in local government, like the previous gentleman there. And I don't want to be part of the NIMBY crowd, not in my backyard, just because it's a new idea. I'm not really opposed necessarily to solar. What I am opposed to is not having some pretty substantial questions answered. And I have two major concerns. Number one, and yes, I'm a transplant from the Metroplex. I didn't play football here or anything like that. But I still own property here, live here, and pay taxes here. And I live on the lake. And it's a lake that struggles. And it's, I could be wrong on this, but it's my understanding that the size of both are disproportionate amount of property taxes are paid by people that live on the lake. You take that water out of the lake, and no one can tell me how much water you're going to take out. I mean, I hope they can, you guys, tell us exactly how much water you're going to take out. Anyway, that's one of my questions that has not yet been answered. The second part is, the board put forward a school bond, and my wife was a principal. I'm very much in favor of what school districts need. They put forward their legacy, y'all put forward your legacy projects, things that you wanted to accomplish as members. And the citizens voted it down. When somebody votes for a bond project, they're also implied that they are agreeing to pay for the future tax raises for the increased maintenance on that new buildings or whatever they build. This completely, to me, circumvents. You guys, and I say y'all, I don't mean that disrespectfully, but you get the money to build your projects, you're given tax abatements that would help pay for the maintenance of those projects, and, you know, on down the road, and you have the citizens left, taxpayers holding the bag. So there again, I, and by the way, I really wasn't upset until I started reading this thing. And in the second paragraph, I'm like, really? You would make a statement like this that is as sincere and transparent as anything? And in the last one, should I be concerned about my, I don't even get to that. This was obviously written one side by someone that wasn't doing a realistic viewpoint of trying to pros the costs. I haven't seen a comment here. So anyway, that's my two cents for it. And I hope that you guys will consider, particularly what the voters have told you already about these projects they're putting forward, and also about what you may do to property values in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, it's Harold Duke. Home board is Tamela.
Yeah, I have a question. Why are we giving a secondary tax break when our government has already funded these projects? So, the government's already stepped in and given them subsidy, subsidized the project. But yet, they're asking you, the county now, to step in and give them. And I don't understand why y'all are not focusing on that part of it. Then, to let you know, I talked to Farm Bureau, the insurance agency, and the Farm Bureau for our land. They're against tax abatements. They do not believe that tax abatements are, should be passed through school districts. It's not only your school district, it's all the school districts in the state of Texas that are passing these abatements. And then you're putting all the schoolchildren, you're stealing the money from them for the future. You're stealing billions of dollars. Instead of it going back, letting them pay the full tax, and letting it distribute out through the state of Texas, you're taking money from the next county. You're taking money from the kids in the next county. So instead of letting, another question, which you can't answer, are you going to give your schoolteachers raises? Across the board are all your schoolteachers, the ones that are working hard. Are you giving them raises from this money? At the end of the day, you can't give them a raise because you can't guarantee the money will return back. Sorry, I'm a little nervous that I'm talking in front of that many people. So, and then another question I have here. Have y'all hired an outside tax consultant to tell y'all, you know, what you're looking at, what your money would be on both sides? So, what your tax abatement brings in versus what the money would be brought in if you let them pay the full tax? That's all I have to say.
Tony Sims.
She wants to pass.
Pam's passing, right. Yes, Mr. Sims is next. And then David Truesdale will be after. Tony?
Guys, I'm really not used to public speaking. And the in-tax abatement thing, actually, we have this audience here, those gave, got that, did the same thing. But they, when I left there a year and a half ago, there were 1,300 people working in that panel. My understanding is, with all of us here, there are going to be four employees now to take care of everything that has been done with the solar panels. My other concern is this. I lived here, I can show you my great grandparents' grave in North Franklin County. They were all farmers. My family's all been farmers. We're concerned about the environment. I, for one, do not believe that you can ruin water over solar panels for months and months and months and not get some kind of runoff. They say they can contain it. Tornado comes through and blows those panels all over the country. Who's going to take care of it? There is small projects, small acreages all around me. My next door neighbor has 13 acres. Right next to him is 300. That man knows 300 acres of solar panels. What's going to happen to the 13 acre man? The little guy. I know that the bond did not pass. It came during a time of the pandemic, during a time of possible recession. Everybody concerned about money. And here comes the bond. For the first time in my life, I'm standing here with this school. This is very important to me, my family, my kids, my grandkids. I would love to be able to pass my properties on to my grandkids. If I've got solar panels all around, what are you going to do? What are you going to do with 100 acres? What are you going to tell them? What's going to happen? I know for a fact that, and towards South of Puff, where they're playing on flip some, I'm not sure where the watershed goes exactly. But part of it goes to South River, part of it goes through my property. And there's enough contaminants in this world without all this, I understand there's magnesium involved, I understand there is silica involved, I understand there is sulfuric acid involved. How about leak? How about tornado? How about hailstorm? Who's going to be responsible? Going to be us? Going to be the company?
Thank you, Mrs. Sims.
Money is money.
Yes, sir. David Truesdale? Next up will be Eddie Stone.
Go ahead, Eddie.
Good evening. My name is David Truesdale, and I own the property just south of the proposed solar complex off 1896. As a retired senior leader of men and women who every day put their lives on the line for this country, I know about making critical decisions. I understand the process of gathering intelligence or information, analyzing this information, and then making critical life and death decisions. This proposed solar complex is a disaster in the making. Not only have you not considered the first step of gathering information, but you have either knowingly or unknowingly submitted fraudulent information to the Texas Comptroller Zots, particularly in section eight, when you submitted Form 50-TAC 296-TAC Alpha, the application for appraised value limitations, notarized as true and complete on 9 May 2022. In addition to this submission, you accepted an amendment to this document on 1 September 2022, containing these same suspected false statements, and have apparently submitted it also. This new amendment is not really an amendment. It is essentially a complete change to the proposed bill, and I would argue that this would need a complete new request. Submission of a false statement on this application is a Class A misdemeanor or a state jail felony under Texas Penal Code Section 37.10. In order to fulfill the requirement for 313 tax abatement, you must approve, only approve those applications that, one, enhance the local community. And if you look around this room, I don't think you've met that. Two, improve the local education system. I think we could argue that to obtain extra money, utilize it only for building structures, and not providing additional pay to our educators. I think we could argue that you haven't met that either. Three, create high-paying jobs. Apparently, you've waived these jobs to one to two. Clearly, you've not met that requirement. And four, advance economic development goals of Texas. Here, I may argue that bringing an out-of-state company in to destroy our local agricultural land costs our community jobs for the people that work those lands and provide services and products to those that work the land. I would argue you've not met that either. Based on your failure to meet any of these requirements, I would say that if you do agree to this proposal, you may be technically stepping outside the scope of your appointment, employment, and therefore be personally liable for any lawsuits that result from this action. As to possible lawsuits which result from your failure to conduct due diligence, I have spoken to three fire departments in this local area, and none are equipped or specifically trained to fight a fire. Two additional ones, but I didn't speak to them. That means, in the event of a fire, there is likely to be extensive damage to personal property and/or loss of life. You may think that this vote is done, that this goes away. It doesn't. We in this community have moral courage and care enough about the future of this county to keep fighting as long as it takes. To close out, I implore you to dig deep and find your moral courage to stand up for what you know is right in your heart.
Thank you, Mr. Truesdale. Next up is Eddie Stone.
Start out on a positive note. I want to thank the board for what y'all did. It's a probably a very thankless job, unpaid job. And I'm glad you did it. But you've got a big responsibility right now, not just to the school board, but to this whole county. As far as these solar panel farms, I think that's an insult to a farmer to call them a farm. These are solar panel industrial zones. Call them a farm is like saying, putting lipstick on a pig. It's just, it's not right. And what's drawn my attention to this situation was immediately when I see you started changing the rules on a number of jobs. That was a red flag. When you start bending rules, you're in trouble. And that's where I see y'all starting out wrong in this thing. The fact that somebody's giving you money now to give them money later, I hate to say it, it's cheating, it's a bribe, it's, it's wrong. If the sheriff come in here and said, I need new squad cars and new bulletproof vests, and he takes money from drug dealers, wouldn't we want to put him in jail? And I think this is simple. The lake out here is a cash cow for this county, has been for years. And to take a chance of ruining that, we got water issues already out there right now. We're down two and a half feet, and it's not getting any better. But finally, in my opinion is, what about the person next door to these things? I asked each and every one of y'all, would you want this panel farm next to your house or next to your farm? What happens when they go in? What do these people, how do they sell their property? Would you buy it? I certainly would. I don't think anybody would. But closing, I think it boils down to one thing. And I think we all heard the golden rule. And if you know what the golden rule is, it's do unto others as you would have done to them. You guys vote, and all is going to be that golden rule.
Mr. Emery, Jim Emery? Next up will be Joe Gordon.
Thank y'all for letting us have this time to address you. I am totally 100%. Me and my family, all of us are against these things. I don't want to look at them. I don't want to get close to them. I've been on North Franklin Fire Department since it started in 1976. Nobody has approached our department or any other department in this county for any kind of training, for any kind of equipment. Equipment to fight, these lithium batteries is highly expensive. We are barely existing right now, fighting fires and doing things that we're doing right now. We cannot buy this equipment to fight these fires. You can't just pull a lithium ion battery out. There's going to be thousands of them. They don't just go out. These Tesla cars, they catch on fire. Put it out. A month later, it's back on fire. All the carcinogens, it's going to be released. You can evacuate the people around, but we don't even know how big an area you've got to evacuate. Yeah, we get the people out, but what about all your livestock, and everything is there, that's going to be breathing in all these carcinogens? You eat that livestock, your kids, your grandkids, so on. What does it do to them? Please, please, do the Christian thing. Stop and think about what you're doing for generations to come.
Mr. Gordon is going to stay where he's at right now. Mr. Emery, thank you for your service. Joe?
Hey, folks, I don't talk very loud, so listen hard, okay? I'm really talking to this, this group here. There are only four jobs coming. We've got 16 businesses on a piece of paper that employ more people than that right now. The common denominator is, they pay their taxes, and they don't ask for tax deals. Two days ago, a member of this board confided in me that if a vote were taken today, the vote would be 6-1 or 7-0 in favor of solar. I hope that's not true. I was also told that I can do nothing to change your mind. So I'm here today to change your mind. Two days ago, something happened really neat in Higginsport, Texas. We had a town hall, good turnout. We've invented something called a rain gauge. It's equivalent to a vote. These are the people, we got four and a half inches of rain in our gauge. The green didn't get the ground wet, I'll put it that way. The interesting thing is that the people who hired this board, or who voted this board in, have absolutely no power. This represents maybe the school board. And you have all the power. And I very humbly ask you, don't do this thing. I ask you as individuals. You, these people that put you in office, put their faith in you. They trust you to do the right thing. They trust you to do what they put you in office for. Yet, they have no power. Seven people control all of the power in Franklin County as to this decision. If it came to a 4-3 vote, one person would decide what's going to happen in Franklin County for the next multiple generations. You're about to make a general rational decision that we're going to take our farming ranch lands and turn it into solar farms. Don't do that. We sit here today dividing into different color hats and things, and I've got a proposal for you. What I propose is that we look for common ground. Maybe we are on the same team. Maybe we are on the same team. We all want to do what's right for the kids. So maybe we take off the red and the green hats and we both put this hat on, we're on the same team, united. Start listening, stop talking past each other, find common ground because that's the best for our kids and we share that vision.
Thank you, Joe. Eric. Next up will be Ms. Owens. Linda, you'll be next.
I actually think that everything's being covered pretty well. I don't have a lot to add, I don't have a lot to say about the subject at the moment. But I do want to bounce off of Mr. Emery, he said that they haven't been addressed and it's universal throughout the country and perhaps the world, but for sure the country, that when solar comes to your area, it's very hush-hush. Have you ever known anything good to come out of something you have to hide? Why do they have to hide the fact that they're in the county, that they're dealing with you? I want to thank everybody that's here, we've got good support. I hope that you all will listen to what people are saying because, you know, we've been scouring the county for a couple of months. You've really got to look hard to find somebody that's not going to directly benefit from it, that's in favor of it. The only other thing I had was a piece of mail for each of you. I don't know if you would want to pass them out yourself, if I could pass them out to the individuals, because I just want to make sure they get past the US mail. Can I give them to each individual or? Okay. Is that it, Mary? Yes.
Ms. Owens, thank you, Mary. Mr. Hicks, you'll be after, Ms. Owens.
Well, I taught school over here 27 years, some in that building, some in this building. But I'm very concerned about the schools. We voted for the bond. I know everyone here, I could call your name. I've known some of you since you've been born. And I went to some of you and the others went to school while I was teaching. But I'm concerned about the land. We've got family land that's been in our family for over 100 years. And there is a solar panel project planned just up the road. And we've gone through some of these solar projects with just constructing the overhead wires there. And the roads were torn up, my commissioner could verify that. I just knew someone was going to get killed because the people working drove like they were on Interstate 30 and it's a small, flat top road. I didn't come from here with scientific information, I came with information from my heart. And I would like to ask all of you what I asked the retired veterinarian who spoke here a couple of months ago. He got up and said he was totally for it all and afterwards I talked to him and he had a totally different attitude. And the questions I'm asking, I'm going to ask you tonight. Would you like to live across from a solar panels, right near where your house is? Would you like to live across the road from solar panels? There are people here tonight who will be doing that if it goes through. Also, I asked, anyway, he said, "No," he'd never thought about that. Even though he said he was totally for the solar, he said, "No," he'd never considered that he would think it, even if it was possible. And then his, the other question I asked him, have you ever been to a solar project in this area? He'd never been to a solar project in this area. And I'm asking you tonight, if you haven't been, you may be going to Cunningham, Texas. Thank you.
Lance, Dave is next, after Mr. Hicks here, so Mr. Hicks will go.
10 years of abatements and what's left? And who gets these benefits? A few local property owners. And then the money will go overseas under the federal tax abatements that pay up to 50% or whatever, and then they want an abatement on top of that. Scoreboard members, we understand your desire and your need to abate taxes and get big bucks to fund school construction. But do know, we are now actually at about 1,000 signatures on petitions to stop solar in this county. This is driving a wedge. We're doing this, and I'm sorry we're doing it, but Linda Owens is my cousin, I knew her grandparents. But you do have a duty to exercise due diligence. I knew all of you just like Linda Owens. I knew your grandparents were a bustle. Look to the collateral damage if you welcome solar installations. Permanent environmental degradation, permanent environmental degradation, disruption of our economy, destroying our agricultural economy for a limited number of jobs, four jobs, and destruction of the land. In the news, actually yesterday, in the news yesterday, a headline, misleading reports from the solar industry regarding water use. Misleading reports from the solar industry. We heard the veteran tell us about the handouts and analyzing data. It's hard to analyze it, but this is a new technology. And now we're finally getting some reports coming through about the huge water use, the vast water use in one study. Water is the lifeblood for your tax base. Today Franklin County water, created by Franklin County tax dollars, is pumped to stampede solar in Saltillo, Texas, the next county. Last week, last week, I didn't know what a BES was. You better look it up, friends, I know now. I thought we were only getting solar panels here. At last week's public meeting, the fire chiefs from Mount Vernon and North Franklin both reported on the threats of public safety posed by solar installations. Make sure, scoreboard members, that you set aside money to cover the damages from fires and battery explosions. 1.5 million panels on 10,000 acres and up to 300,000 batteries under those pending applications, 300,000 lithium batteries and multiple BES units. Do we taxpayers put the bill for special firefighting equipment and training? Who pays for the cleanup cost if this company declares bankruptcy? The limited liability companies created and operate here will fold and we won't find the owners in China or Italy or France willing to come forward and pay the money. Lawsuits will follow. Do not sell your souls for solar.
Lance. Next up will be Dr. Black, David Black.
Okay, first off, I appreciate the job that y'all do, okay? I notice a lot of you in here are ex-servants, I'm a former Marine, you know, doing something above yourself is a noble, and I want you to know, I appreciate what you do. Okay? This issue is a political issue. This issue is an emotional issue. This issue has almost nothing to do with anything else, okay? We all know about Solyndra, we all know about Bound Solar. I could go on and on about all the companies that have failed to deliver this product. At the beginning of this, you asked us all to silence the phones, okay? This was created by a pre-market, okay? The market does not want solar. The government keeps trying to kickstart it, all they can, to try to get this engine running because they think that it's somehow going to save the environment or do some other work, okay? And so what they do is they call on your heartstrings, okay? And they're using our students to get to you because they know that's the way, that's the angle that they get to use. Because they can't bribe you, you probably won't even take a bribe, okay? But they sit there and they go, these incentives in front of you, and say, "Hey, we can get you that money," okay? Now, as long as I've been voting, there's always a school bond, okay? And that bond always extends the bond to where the bond will be paid off later, okay? So I think for the perpetual future, the school board will have a bond. You will always be in debt, you will always be paying for something. I don't believe this is the vehicle to get that bond ever paid. It may seem like it today, but I ask you this, if you were going to invest in this company, and if the answer is no, then don't invest in this company now. That's all I have to say.
Dr. Black will be our last one.
I'm a consultant, I'm involved in a whole lot of boards all over the county and I'm in some tax entities as far as the hospital board. One thing that you can look at as far as taxing entities is the money that this brings in helps, we helped reduce our tax rate for the last two years because of some of the different reasons taxes coming in from the solar panels. That's not all, it involved us being able to reduce taxes and all. As far as onboards, we hear stuff like this all the time, you've got to look at it as a decision-making process for what's best for the county. As far as, and I was going to go over a bunch of positive things, I'm going to skip all that and go, y'all know the positives and negatives. As far as debunking a few things, first of all, if you're going to bring up factual things about water usage, disposal of these things, they set up escrow accounts to take care of anything, so if they go bankrupt, if they have problems, there's escrow accounts set up that are going to take care of all this stuff if something goes wrong, if there's damage or whatever. As far as water usage, my understanding is it takes less than a half foot acre of water per year to wash these things off because it's like washing your windshield at a gas station, spray it, squeeze it off. And any water is going to be local on-premise usage is what my understanding is and the research I've done. So, and a lot of other things that kind of go along with this, if you're going to use information, make it factual. And there are sources to go to for factual. As far as tax abatements, I can assure you, Lowe's got all kinds of tax abatements when they move in here, it's just business. Business, business. But as far as reducing tax rates and all that.
Y'all didn't interrupt when you were speaking and we don't expect you to interrupt Dr. Black when he's speaking.
As school board members and trustees, y'all have a fiduciary responsibility to consider any and every revenue that comes into this county and that's your job, is to bring money in and fund anything as far as education, building, your responsibilities are that. And I don't know if all these people know, and my understanding is governmental wise, y'all don't have a decision-making as far as permitting it, give them the okay or anything like that. The only decision you're making is saying yes or no to the funding that's going to come to you. So y'all are kind of talking to the wrong boards because they don't have a decision as that. And as far as the M.I. money that comes to you, there's a cap on that, the INS money, there's not a cap on that. It'll continue to flow the entire city.
Thank you, Dr. Black. We're just going to get up in there at the end and let a few others go over, but when you laugh at somebody, it's disrespectful. I was taught not to wear a hat or a cap, and I see a gentleman, thank you for taking that off. I'm going bald, I'd love to be able to wear my cap up here, but wasn't going to say anything, but when you disrespect somebody that's coming up here that has an opinion or some information, just like you do, board, play for each other, but don't lose, you know, we're supposed to, I send as much as anybody in here, but just don't hold it against them because we all have our own opinions. We're listening to you. We're here tonight doing our due diligence, we're working our way up to this, and we have companies that have, we've asked three different people to come in here, they all have different groups that are going to bring us information. Hopefully we'll get good information out of this. Y'all can't participate, but if we as a board have a question and we don't think we're getting the answers, we're going to press them. And if they don't give us good answers, it's probably not real good for that company. So thank y'all for your time, we're listening to you, we promise you are, we're going to have these folks come up here at the end. Are we online yet, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay, so once we get through, we have a consultant through A&amp;M that's neutral on this stuff and he's going to come in here, he's heard y'all, he's been listening to this, he's going to listen to them, and then we'll go to him, so. Right, don't interrupt the speakers because they're bringing us information, this is a meeting that we're allowed to let y'all participate in, so you may not agree with them, I may not agree with them, but we're going to, I can ask questions. We'll figure out a way to get y'all some answers. Y'all have, you know, we'll get the answers probably and we'll figure out a way to get those to y'all. These companies want y'all to know too, hopefully what y'all need to know to appease our questions and desires because this is a very important decision. So, Dr. Chappell, who want to start with?
So we'll start with Zach in Anel, if you don't mind. How we do this, like you'd have opportunity to come up and kind of share, as we kind talked about, kind of share, the board composed some questions and we sent those questions to the, to each company. Glad that you kind of speak towards those and then give the board the opportunity to ask you questions and then through it, we'll give y'all the opportunity to kind of do the same thing following Zach and then maybe we can have both at the same time at the end to answer questions from the board and then we'll give Dr. Branson the opportunity to answer some questions as well. Does that, okay? Zach, would you like to come share first?
Anthony, do we need to move that mic closer or is it going to be okay? I've been asking.
Good. Good, just if you introduce yourself and who you represent, please.
Yeah, sure, thanks. So my name is Zach Perkoki, I represent Anel Bring Power. I'm our development manager for the project, so essentially that oversees the leasing aspect of it and then our development team, which includes a permitting lead, environmental lead, engineering lead, real estate lead, and then a engineering and construction permitting lead. So we can definitely get into more of what each of those leads go into, but I manage the whole team for Stockyard Solar. Y'all have any questions you want to start off with, or I know y'all sent a personal question, just get to those.
I'd say just go ahead and get into those, if you'd like, please.
Yeah, that sounds great. So, you know, water use is a big hot topic here in Franklin County. You know, with these, with these solar projects, we have, we've been able to use the ponds on the property and just the water resources that are on the leased property that, you know, that are on the landowners' property. We have been able to do that at Saltillo, right? That's our project at Saltillo. We use water from anywhere else but the ponds. These panels use very little water. Once constructed, you know, during, during construction, there is, there is some water use and that's typical for any type of industry that is, you know, doing construction, right? So we have, you know, our Saltillo project is roughly the same distance away from Lake Cypress, right? Which I know is a big topic. We haven't approached any sort of water district entity here in Franklin County for water there, you know, we're not planning to do that here for this project on Daphne Prairie.
In regard to water, you know, one of the concerns that's coming up that we keep hearing is, is those panels will have to be washed and cleaned every two hours.
Yes, that is not true. You know, being out here in northeast Texas, y'all get rainfall quite a bit, right? You get more than most other places, right, in Texas. But, you know, we have a great example.
So I have a great example right now with a drought for a month.
Yes, so I have a great example. We have a project, we have a project in Kaufman County, right? That's been operational for a year and a half. We have not washed the panels once there. It's just, you know, rainfall that's happened every few months hasn't been able to keep the panels clean. We don't have to wash them every two hours, you know, no one has the time or money or manpower to do that, right? These panels actually stay relatively clean and, you know, we, we just use natural rainfall on that.
I have a question regarding the water usage too. I read something someone said that if the temperature gets over, say 90 degrees or a certain temperature, that they have to be misted to keep them cool, is that true?
Again, I can bring up our Kaufman County site, that's been in operation for a year and a half, you know, just went through this summer. We didn't know misting out there, we just relied on natural rainfall.
Another one of the questions you kind of dealt with, you might, if you're about to address this, I apologize. Just want to be sure it was addressed. You know, even through the natural rainwater, washing it, is there containment in regard to, are the question in regard to the possibility of contaminated water? Is that a possibility? If it is, how is that contained?
Yeah, no, that's a great question that we get all, that's a great question that we get all the time. So, you know, these panels, the way they're made, they're sealed, airtight, right? A lot of the materials that are in the panels actually, you know, aren't toxic whatsoever. The glass is a lot like automobile glass, so when you, if it breaks through a hailstorm or what have you, it kind of shatters altogether, right, now to multiple pieces. And just going to the other question, you know, that's been brought up is, we do pay for that if anything's damaged, right? Obviously, we're not going to make our landowners pay thousands and thousands of dollars for, for something that is Anel property, right? So, that, wanted to make sure I answered that there. But as far as, you know, they can, they can withstand a hundred fifty mile per hour winds, you know, we have projects off the coast of the Gulf, right? That, you know, we wouldn't be siding there, you know, in hurricane territory, right? If we didn't, they can withstand it. You know, the panels are actually pretty durable, can withstand a lot. So, the technology's come a long way since, you know, it's, you know, been really kicking off here in the past, you know, fifteen, twenty years. And it's been a lot, a lot more, you know, innovation in that industry, which has made it a lot more cost effective, so.
Hailstorms, do they damage the panels or?
Yeah, so it goes back, goes back to what I was saying, you know, those are very durable. If anything, you know, if y'all are getting, you know, softball sized hail or anything like that and there is damage, we, you know, that is coming out of our pocket, yeah, and we replace it.
So, if there's a hailstorm, is there any chance of it kind of contaminating the ground?
No, like I said, the materials that we are using in our panels are not toxic, right? There's, there's very, very little likelihood anything's going to happen there.
So, can you get into that a little more, like the toxicity, like if chemicals start using, does that emit, like they're completely clean?
Well, it's, it's using, it's using, it's using, there's not really any major chemicals in these panels, right? It's all special materials, right? Like I said, these are airtight, sealed up from, from the manufacturer, right? And it does take a lot, you know, like I said, it takes a hundred fifty mile per hour winds, things like that, so.
Who's here from Samsung? Okay, and that's going to be a question we're going to ask him or y'all because that's a big concern. It's a concern for everybody in this room, me, the board. You know, I mean, I know this cell phone has a, probably a lithium battery in it, I carry it in my pocket, put it up next to my head. I know it's probably dangerous, but I almost don't care because I need it so much. But, we want to know, you know, when you say, there's some not, there's some things that's not toxic in there.
Well, I'm talking about the panels, talking about the panels. So, on the lithium batteries, you know, we keep those in climate-controlled, airtight containers, right? That are, you know, next to our project and the transmission system, things like that. We have a real-time monitoring onsite and offsite that, you know, it's real-time. So, even in, you know, two AM, you know, some, one of the batteries goes out or something goes wrong, we, we have that real-time monitoring and our guys are usually onsite, you know, to come, to come look at that. You know, going back to fire mitigation plans and things like that. I know, I know it's been mentioned that we haven't reached out to the fire department yet, you know, that is standard for us to do in every state, every county across the, you know, country. The fact that we haven't done it yet doesn't mean that we're not doing it, right? You know, we, we wanted to come to y'all first and talk with y'all before we go talk with the county. So, as far as fire mitigation plans goes, we have, we take all the safety precautions that we, that we do. We do work closely with local fire departments on training, things like that. We have, we do provide, you know, emergency responders with the equipment that they need to combat anything that happens, it's very unlikely, you know, we've done a lot of these battery projects and we haven't had a single incident, you know? So.
What kind of equipment would you provide to battle this?
Yeah, so, you know, that's really between our H S E Q folks, which is our safety folks, and the fire department on what they feel is different, right? Every fire department has different things, whether it be a truck or maybe an extra fire hydrant out there, right? Or something like that, you know, just something that they, that they can, it, it differs from county to county, right? On what they, what they want and what they feel like they need, so.
Say county, can the school negotiate any of this?
Not typically, it's usually, we usually deal directly with the, you know, fire department, police department and all this because they'll take, they know what they, what they need, right?
So, there is, even though we can't specify to any kind of agreement, there could be funding available to provide them with the equipment necessary and the training.
Yeah, so we, we do that with, with all of our projects, right? We have set, we have money set aside for the fire departments, for the police departments to be able to, you know, be outside properly and be able to, you know, combat anything they may, they may run up against. And also just to be a good community member, we also like to donate to fire departments and police departments.
Zach, Zach, can I, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, would you introduce yourself? My name is Brian Whitaker, I am actually the site manager out here at the South Tillo project. I just want to elaborate a little bit on the battery storage system. It is a self-contained unit, it is completely sealed up and it has its own fire suppression system inside of it. So, if the batteries do explode, if they, there is also containment, they have their own self-containment. So, in the case of an emergency, like you said, we do have twenty-four hour monitoring of those systems. But in the event that something happens with those batteries, it has its own fire suppression system and it has its own spill containment. So, we take every precaution that we can possibly take to keep the environment safe, that's the aspect of it.
Good question, if it does explode and it ruptures the container? You can't have questions from the outside here, but let me ask you that, I'm probably going to have the same question. And I'm sorry, I wish we could knock all this out tonight, but if I let Mr. Duke ask the question, we got to do everybody. So, my question thinking about that is, is has that ever happened before? You know, we're, these people in the room, you know, I know if a battery explodes, but what if a hundred of them explode? And it, is there any proof that we can get that thing knocked out, get that fire put out?
So, the battery storage system itself is in a completely fenced, kind of like a substation, with a huge main power transformer in it that supplies all you guys electricity. You know how many, you know how many gallons of oil are in those things? Two, it's got its own self-containment pit, it's built inside a fence with gravel, berms. If you had all hundred batteries blow up, it's not going to get outside that containment area. The, when I say containment area, the whole yard, if I should say.
What about air contamination?
Air contamination, I know absolutely.
If that, in that scenario, what's the risk there?
I don't know.
Well, like I said, you know, we have, we have, we have, you know, twenty plus of these, right? That have been in operation for a while, these battery storage projects. And I'm talking about just straight standalone battery, you know, these are attached to our actual solar projects, you know? You know, storing that energy in low peak times, but there hasn't been any issues, right? We haven't, you know, we haven't ran across any of this. We have, we have, like I mentioned, we have a very detailed fire protection plan and we work closely with fire departments. And we have safety as an else, you know, most, you know, renewable companies, number one priority, right? And, you know, we don't want our employees getting hurt, other folks getting hurt, things like that.
When you say a while, like ten or twenty years, that's what we're wondering probably is, yeah, ten years or in twenty years, if this thing is still is safe, you know, do we still, what do we have to do to keep it the same?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, it's still, it's just as safe as, you know, when you turn to keep it up first day, right? These, some of these batteries, you know, standalone batteries relatively do so. I would say, you know, these projects are around five or so years old, right? So, they've been going, no, no really any issues. And, you know, we do have, we do have them attached to our solar project here, so that'll be helpful to work with some of that solar energy during low peak times.
We're moving on here, but you mentioned that's producing our electricity. Will we get electricity from these farms, these complexes?
Yeah, so that's a great question that we also get all the time, you know? I can speak, I can speak for Anel, you know, here. We do, you know, get some power purchase agreements on projects, right? With a, maybe like a, a Anheuser-Busch, we've done Anheuser-Busch, Polaris, things like that, right? But for the most part in Texas, a lot of our power is merchant. So, it's going out onto the grid and settling at either the Dallas hub or the Houston hub, those are the two main electrical hubs, right? You know, electrically, we are very close to Dallas, you know, it's not like drive, getting in your car and driving the two hours to get to an hour and a half to get to Dallas, right? Electrically, it's a lot closer than that. You know, the power that gets put on the grid, you know, is used by local, you know, can be used by local COO's, right? It's really up to the local COO's on, you know, pricing, things like that, of course, right? But I will mention that a lot of our projects are merchant in Texas, so we do just sell it off at the grid for the local communities to, you know, whoever is between here and Dallas wherever. So, and then it disperses to other places, so.
And the answer I'm kind of looking for is, you know, we're farming, or you're, you're using our resources. You're coming to Franklin County and you're using this. What guarantee do we have when we have another snowstorm? I'm not really worried about people in Dallas as I am these people that have put us in these positions that are trustworthy for these, you know, this is, we're up here for the school, but if we accept an agreement like this, I need to be able to take care of these people. You know, what, what can we do for them? Is there a way that we can, out of how you put stuff in the grid, that we can have our own grid? We have these batteries, you know, do you have your own battery that when things go south, you say, you know what? We have these panels and they're not doing it for us, that's going to make us, that's going to make us, let me look pretty bad, so. Is there a way?
Yeah, so, you know, that's really, you know, on boards is big, you know, utility out here, right? With the COO's underneath them, and then you have ERCOT of course, right? So, all of that is out of our control, you know, that's really with ERCOT and for things like that. As far as the freeze goes, you know, I'm from Sherman, Texas, I, that was the first time I've seen it be like that for, since I've, you know, lived, right? That's not good, once in a lifetime type of event. You know, everything's shut down in Texas, not just, you know, renewables, you know, the, I know the nuclear power plant shut down, ice was frozen for oil and gas, everything, right? We're at, you know, with these, with these, with our panels at least, we have, you know, and all across Texas, they're bi-satial. So, you know, they actually, you know, they get and collect, they're collecting sun from the, from the sky, but also can get some of that off the reflection as well. So, during that deep freeze, our panels, you know, from that reflection off the snow, actually helped melt a lot of that ice there on top of the panel. So, we were actually up and running on most of our sites within the, you know, within the twenty-four hours after it got, you know, below twenty-five degrees, right? Negative forty-five, so.
Okay, so that brings up another question, you're talking about, this leads into the, to the ambient temperature, I guess, around the sites.
Yes.
We've all received, you know, emails and calls and texts that it's going to be a super hot spot.
Yeah, exactly. So, I could definitely answer that for you, so, you know, around, directly in and around the project, there's really, there's really no sort of heat. I can give you an example, so we, up in our, we have a, we have a Minnesota site called Revora Solar. We've implemented dual-use solar, right? So, it's, you know, native grasses with pollinators, things like that. And also we put sheep out there, right? You know, we wouldn't put sheep out there if, if we thought that they were going to be, you know, burnt to a crisp, right? And want to eat land chops, you know, so.
That's a pretty big question, you'd be probably saying that question we've submitted to you. But there's, it's known that they use animal refreshly sheep and kind of goes back to this stuff being toxic, you know? If, if one panel was to bust and there's something in there that's toxic and that sheep or goat eats that, does it?
Well, it goes back to what I was saying, that these aren't really toxic, right? And they're airtight, sealed, there's, there's not really that risk there, right? And going back to the heat that you've mentioned, you know, I can see how that's a common thought, right? Because you're, you know, you're bringing in this, the power of the sun, right? Where, you know, you would think that maybe there could be some heat back off there, but that's just not the case. You know, we do full environmental studies, things like that. And we've seen that, you know, that, that, you know, the local habitat, birds, things like that can still, you know, fly around it and be able to cope with this, so.
So, in the middle of August, if it's a hundred and ten, is it going to be a hundred and twenty if I'm next to it? Is my house going to?
No, no, no.
That's the main question.
No, no sir, no sir. And if it's a hundred and ten, you're already inside with the AC on anyways, right? So, but going back to the environmental, going back to the environmental aspect of this, so we do full environmental studies from start to finish of our development work. That is really some of the first work that we do. You know, we do wetlands studies, we do T D habitat, which is written in danger species studies. And for this project, everything has come back clean, there's really, there's really nothing that has been flagged or anything like that. We, we check all the boxes, right? It is a big investment for us, as I'm sure y'all saw on the application. We, we like to make sure we are, you know, crossing the t's and dotting the i's on, on all this stuff. So, we do, you know, we do geotech work for the soils, things like that. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things, a lot of new pieces that go into these solar projects that the spokes just aren't, you know, privy to, right? That, you know, take, you know, really aren't public because it's, you know, our, our, you know, our duty to, to do. So, but, you know, you can't just come into, you know, willy-nilly and, and just put something out, right? So, there's a lot.
So, what you're saying is, is that there have been studies done from Anel at the Stockyard Project?
Yes, yeah, they're, they're all done, yeah, yeah.
Your panels that you're going to use, where, where are they, where are they manufactured or made?
So, it's a US-based manufacturer. That's, that's really all, you know, I can definitely give y'all more information on that, but they, it is.
Do y'all know Samsung, do you know where your panels are made, city, state?
Decision hasn't been made yet, but one of the big things that has been coming out is the reinvigoration of American manufacturing of solar farm equipment. So, there's a whole lot more options here in the next coming years to actually buy American for this. So, again, they're a little bit further along than we are, so a decision hasn't been made yet, but that will continue to be evaluated.
Yeah, and we, you know, we are using a US-based manufacturer for, for these, for this project. We're all very excited about it. I, you know, due to some contractual, you know, we're still going through the motions of all that, right? So, I can definitely give y'all the name as we get closer to, but it is, it is a US-based manufacturer.
Kind of going back to the heat question on, you know, if, if it's over a certain degree, do the panels quit working? Or do they work up to anything where they can stand? If it's a hundred and twenty outside, will they keep on producing energy?
No, that's, that's, that's perfect, yeah, you know, a hundred and twenty outside, sun's beat down, great, yeah, those panels can still operate, so.
What about if it's cloudy for ten days?
Yeah, so, you know, you can still get a sunburn when it's, when it's cloudy out, right? So, it's the same thing with the panels, you know, we can still get some of that electricity out of that.
Hey, that's something in front of my mind here, we had a, during the, somebody mentioned about eight hundred acres total and we've gotten a lot of numbers on these acreages kind of here and there. So, your project is right now about, how many acres?
Our project is around, currently leased is around maybe like four thousand-ish plus, right? I can get you the exact numbers if you want that, so.
So, y'all are at about four thousand?
Where were y'all right now? Do you know?
In the thousands as well, yeah, four thousand.
Around four thousand as well.
So, that question that was addressed earlier about the eight hundred acres and permits and whatnot?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure where that, where that exactly came from, that's definitely.
I know one of these tracts of land, you know, a lot of them are going to be smaller tracts of land in different areas. I know one tract of land is two thousand acres. And I know you can't use all of that and for panels, but is that limiting? And I know you can't use all of that and for panels, but is that limited to?
This project or this project?
Any of them, you know, if it's a large tract of land that's big enough, you know, it's over 800.
I guess why could, why couldn't we use all of it for, uh, why couldn't we use all of it for panels?
Is there a link to what they were saying on this 800?
No, no, and I guess I'd go back to, you know, there, you know, people are talking about how, uh, there's, you know, all the big landowners are maybe benefiting from this, right? We have, we have over 20 landowners signed up, right, with, with, with our, with our efforts, you know? That's, that's a big area, right? They're not all 800 megawatt, uh, landowners, right? There's 30 acres, there's 11, you know, 11 acres next into there, so that's not, that's not necessarily true where we're just using the big landowners, you know, to, to get our project done, so. Um, we're using a lot of the communities there off 1896, um, and, uh, we, we plan on being a community member here for, for a while, so.
So the lifespan of the Stockyard project is anticipated to be how long?
Uh, so our lease is run, uh, for 30 years and we have an opportunity to go to 40. Uh, you know, our panels can, can last about 35 years, you know, you know, probably a little bit longer than that.
And at the end of 30, 35 years, what?
Yes, so that is a question we also get a lot, uh, and, you know, back in September, the Texas Utility Commission, passed some legislation there for decommissioning. Uh, a big part of that is, you know, we are required by that code, uh, to provide a financial assurance, whether it be a letter of credit or bond, by year 10 to each of our landowners for salvage value, reclamation, things like that. Um, there's a lot of other, uh, you know, statutes in that code, those two sections, which we can definitely provide to you if you can attach to the, you know, meeting fitness today for everyone to look at. Uh, but, you know, even before that, back in September, we already had very strict, you know, reclamation language, right? Um, that's a very common question that our landowners ask because, you know, they're thinking about their grandkids who will be getting the property after the project's done. And, uh, we do try to, try to accommodate that and get everything off the property. You know, those, those two sections in that code are very strict. Uh, they had it for wind energy for a long time, and then last year they, they had it in, um, for solar. Uh, you know, and then after that happened, we, we started, you know, adding that into even our pre that legislation.
So what was Nell's first project in Texas? What year was that built?
So in Texas, uh, it was 2018, 2019, out in West Texas. Uh, oh, I was talking about as far as solar goes or wind?
Solar.
Solar. Um, solar was, uh, about 2018, 2019, wind was about 2007.
So even, so let's even, let's speak specifically in regard to the solar. Is Nell still contractually obligated to that? Are y'all still, that is still your project?
Yes, yes, that's still, that's still.
You have not sold that, or nobody else has got that project, Nell still has that project?
That's still our project, so the thing about it now is that, you know, we're developer, instructor, and operator. So everything is in-house, you know, I was, you know, Brian here, right? I, I was easily able to, you know, have Brian come over here because everything is in-house, right?
So let me follow up with what you said in regard, I know this is not, you said it's wind, so I'm gonna step out to that in just a second, but just to ask this question because that's been brought up a lot too in regard to what we've heard, or the board and I've heard in regard from the community. The 2007 first, um, wind project, is Nell still a part of that project?
So that, that project, um, so that was out, uh, and so that one, so we had one in Kansas, right? That was a little bit earlier, 2006, so Smoky Hills Wind Project. We actually have, our, all of our landowners wanted to re-up, so we actually went through our life of our lease and they want to re-up. So we have repowered that and have started, uh.
But you still has that project?
Oh, yes, yeah, that's, that was one of our original, that's in Kansas. Uh, we have quite a few throughout Texas, um, that have been going on. Uh, you know, we have one out in Snyder, uh, Texas, that, you know, we recently, uh, reconfigured to a different, uh, prop, you know, different type of resource, actually, you know, gravity energy, if I can bore your head off about that, but. Uh, you know, those, those landowners, uh, we talked with all those landowners and, uh, they, they were okay with, with us doing that, right? That was really the first project, you know, we really saw a good opportunity for, uh, that, that new, that newer technology, which we don't have to get into. But we, we, we do own-operate, right? So we developed that project in Kansas, we've developed all these projects in Texas, across the country, and we still own them, so.
To that point, if you, there's some other technology comes along, what all do you have, would you have to do to change what you're doing on this land that we're talking about? If you wanted to switch it from solar to something else, what does that look like?
So that was a unique case out there, right? We, that, we haven't done that anywhere else and we, we don't, we don't plan on doing that here. Uh, and that would be all new agreements with the, with the landowners, all that stuff, right? We have no sort of eminent domain or anything over anyone, all this is on private land, they do what, you know, what they want with their own land, right? Uh, so, uh, that was just a unique case, but, uh, that, uh, as far as, you know, redoing something else here, that's definitely, we haven't done that anywhere else, but that, that must be something.
And would the initial term have to run out before you could do that, the initial term of those original contracts?
To do what?
To switch the usage.
To switch the usage?
Mm-hmm.
Um, it would take a lot of decisions, right? I mean, we wouldn't just stop operating, you know, solar project that's producing to, to switch it. Um, we would wait probably until the life of the project was done. That's what happened in the Snyder project, you know, it was a very early wind project where the lease terms weren't as long, right? Uh, they're only about 13 years or so, uh, we switched it, switched it over, so.
Okay, so if, if this comes here, if you do solar, if you put the solar and it's not as successful as you hope and anticipate that it will be, and you're in the abatement agreement with the district for 10 years, could you, with the permission of the property owners, change the usage? If you're still in the current contractual agreement with the district, could you change the usage to something else before that tenure period is up?
No, this is just for Stockyard Solar, right? This is for a solar project with the amount of investment that we've, that we've done, so.
So it would have to stay as solar, at least until?
Thirty years. It has to stay as Stockyard Solar, yes, yeah, which is a solar project that all of our landowners have signed, yes.
I, I can chime onto that one. There's, there's terms within the agreements called maintaining a viable presence, right? What we described in the application, what is certified by the comptroller, what is ultimately approved, has to be what is, you know, you know, materially related to what is described in that application. And then should the district enter into it, again, there's not only a requirement for us to maintain those operations for those 10 years, but years following that, should something change, dramatic change, right? Well, then the, the school district, right, has, you know, legal rights to clawback on any savings that either one of the applicants received, et cetera, right? It's all spelled out there to protect the, the school district, but should you grant this, these are all the obligations that the applicant has to live up to.
Thank you.
So one of the questions that, if the board has more for you, we'll add, we'll let Troy and the guys come up real quick. Um, so at the, so for the projects that you've got going right now, if, if there has been a panel that has been damaged, what's, what's been the process of decommissioning and getting rid of that panel? Where does it go? What happens to it?
Yeah.
I think we have our operations and maintenance.
Is, so actually the Saltillo project has not received, we haven't received our panels yet. No, sir.
Yeah.
I do know that they get set aside and sent back to the manufacturer, where I believe they're refurbished, don't quote down that, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, the materials that are used in the, uh, panels, you know, a lot, you know, there are materials in there that are recyclable, right, and reusable. Uh, you know, we work with our suppliers to have that, that set out, right, at the end of life. Uh, the thing about, the thing about these panels is that, uh, a lot of the, a lot of the materials, you know, are used for other things, you know, which really benefits the reuse and recyclability of, of these panels.
So what, I, I guess what I'm asking is, which we hear from wind power, the turbine propellers.
Blades.
The blades are just buried.
Yeah.
Or that's what we see, I don't know if that's right or not, but, so I guess that's the question in regard to what happens to the panel?
Yeah, so you know, the blades, those are fiberglass, right? They're, they're different than a solar panel, right? That has copper or other, other type of special, special metals in it, so, uh, you can definitely, you know, reuse a lot of that stuff. It's a lot more bendable than, say, a fiberglass blade.
And the glass that's on the solar panels, I hear a lot of people asking about breakage. It is a tempered glass, it's not a, it's not a glass, it's gonna shatter and everything's gonna fall out of it. Just like your windshield in your car, whenever it shatters or whenever it's broken, it just spider webs, that's what our panels do. Uh, so when we receive a, a broken panel off a truck or something like that, it's just spider webbing. That's why I say we just package those right back up, send them back to the supplier.
So they spider web?
Yes.
There's, is there leakage coming out of the spider web?
No.
There's nothing coming out of it?
No, sir.
Uh, I'll mention one last thing as far as community involvement and things like that. Uh, so, you know, and Nell really likes to get involved with the community, you know, we're doing this over at Saltillo ISD in Hopkins County and, you know, the Kaufman County, uh, the project as well. Uh, we have, we do like to work with our, with our, you know, the school, the local school district, uh, for any STEM programs or scholarships. You know, we have a great relationship with Texas State Technical College, where, uh, we have, you know, have donated money to them to help support some of their, uh, department, you know, some of their degrees that they have there, as, as well as provide pathways for students to, to go to a technical college if they so fit, right? Uh, so, uh, we also help out our local responders, you know, I know it's been mentioned that we haven't talked to them yet, but we always, we always, uh, and, and talk with them before we start construction. Uh, it's a must, you know, things like that, so, uh, we, we like to do recreational projects with the county. We talk closely with, you know, economic developers, city council, uh, county commissioners, uh, judge, things like that, as we get closer, um, to the later stage of development, to see what projects they may have uh, that they haven't had the funding for essentially, or, um, would like to do have an idea, maybe they could use some help on, things like that, so. Uh, we do like to be very involved. Um, I know that, uh, people think that we may have, you know, snuck up into here to, to lease, right? You know, this is all private property, we've talked with folks, um, there's been folks that have told us no, or, you know, we've said okay, um, we respect your decision and moved on, right? So, uh, everything's recorded at the courthouse, uh, we definitely aren't trying to, to be that way, so.
Any other questions for Zach?
You heard or read that, you know, with these solar panels, they're probably ruining vegetation under it, there's been ever snakes and rats and mice and dirt. Is there any truth to that? Is there what do you do to keep that becoming just a desert under your path?
Are you going around? Yeah, so that's a great question. Uh, you know, I would love to point to our Kaufman County, if y'all have the time to go drive out there. Uh, we definitely give you a site visit, there's grass, the grass that was there before we started construction is growing under there now. Uh, I've mentioned the dual-uses where we, where we, you know, look at the, at the ground that we're putting our project on and have done the pollinators and the sheep and things like that to keep it a nice ecosystem, so. Um, you know, it, you know, you definitely gotta look at what the terrain was before, right? You know, that project I mentioned that started construction in 2019, 2018, I mean, that was on top of a mesa in the middle of West Texas. There was really nothing growing there before we got there, right? So, uh, you know, when it comes out here where there's already native, native grasses, native prairie, things like that, all that stays the same. Um, as far as spraying goes, uh, we actually use way less harmful chemicals than what probably the landowners are using, right? They just wanna get rid of the weeds. Um, we, uh, we actually have a lot more, you know, red tape that we go through to, to make sure we're spraying what, what is good for the, for the land, so.
Out at the site, I can't keep the grass mowed fast enough. I've got, uh, and at the end, we will have 13 robotic mowers that'll do nothing but mow, uh, the solar project. So, uh, before our contractor can leave the site, they have to, the, the entire site has to have 70% growth before they, the contractors get to the site and call it done, so.
So y'all use very little herbicide?
We do. Uh, right now, we are using the herbicide, uh, to spray the weeds that are on the site, just to, to get rid of the weeds. We do have a good amount of Bermuda grass out there, it's wild and it's taking off and now it's starting to choke out all the weeds. Uh, we do have, on the fire mitigation plan, we have to spray the fence lines and stuff with the herbicide to actually kill, you know, for, for fire mitigation, so, uh, those are some of the other things that we do.
On that, um, I have seen what's at Saltillo and what's at Cunningham, and I know, I can't remember if it was one or both, around the poles of the solar arrays, the ground out away from it was mowed, but around the poles, there's lots of, you know, taller growth. Who takes care of that?
So during construction, we do not concentrate as much around those piles, each pole that you're talking about. Uh, once operations takes over and construction gives it to operations, those robotic mowers are just like a Roomba in a house. They'll go right up to the pole, they bump it, they turn, but these are all GPSed, uh, they'll, they'll mow around every one of them.
I think, yeah, I think the moral though is that there is grass to be mowed, right?
Yeah, there is a lot of grass.
Uh, and the fact that you even said that there's a lot of grass around the pile even shows that there even during construction, there's still vegetation, and that was already there, still growing out there, right, so.
But concern there was though, more of the fire risk, would it be taller directly at the pole?
Gotcha, yeah, yeah.
And around those poles, so.
Anything else for Zach?
Yeah, if there's no abatement, what are the chances it's gonna be built?
Yeah, so that's a question we get all the time, and I know a few other folks have mentioned that, right? Uh, in Texas, you know, I haven't seen us build anything where, you know, we haven't gotten an abatement, right? We've gotten abatements on, on mostly everything, you know? Um, it's definitely a conversation piece, it's a big driver while we come to the state, right? Cause other states do not have it, uh, and really makes us competitive with our competition, you know? Uh, and just really drives up the, the economics, right? Uh, but, I, like I said, I haven't seen us build one without some sort of, of abatement, so. And that is a very, you know, a common conversation on our end, you know, it's a decision made higher than myself. Uh, so, you know, I couldn't tell you, but it's a, it's a conversation that's brought up and I haven't seen us build one without some sort of, you know, abatement, so.
Okay, on that, uh, with this 3/13 sun setting on December 31st, going forward, if y'all wanted to do solar, there would be no school district abatements, so.
Yeah, you still have the, you know, the county abatement, right? You have the hospital district, water district, and also our taxing entities, college district, whatever, what have you, right? So, uh, in my answer, you know, I've, that's, that's what I'm getting at, right? You know, some sort of abatement, right, that, uh, we haven't built one without an abatement, so. And it's more of a limitation, right? I would, you know, it's more of a tax limitation.
Have y'all left districts because you did not receive an abatement?
Like I said, we haven't not received one.
How about y'all, have y'all left a district or have you gone through this and not received?
Troy, why don't y'all come on up?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, we've got some of the questions that, that y'all have already answered and right before them, I'm gonna go through them that way cause we want, the people wanna hear some of these answers, but they've already been answered by you and then y'all may wanna co-tell on some of those.
Yeah.
You can, you can take a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, while they're coming up here, let me just, uh, a couple of more, here's some questions. Will the equipment be running 24 hours per day when preparing the land for installation? Uh, the answer is construction will occur during the day and we will work closely with the county and local community to minimize everyday impact. That's from Stockyards. Would y'all agree, or do y'all run, uh, that company 24 hours a day?
Just mobile working hours, right? Obviously, you need sunlight for, for most of this construction activity, so that's what we would do.
Okay, and I had a, a question also, and it was answered by Nell, but, uh, it was about who you hire? Do you hire, I think it was, do you hire convicted felons or child, uh, offenders or anything like that?
No, Samsung or RON, background checks, criminal background checks, credit checks, employment, post, uh, uh, employment checks in the references, right? They've got to stay, uh.
They've got to say a very thorough background check that they run for all employees, drug testing screening, pre-employment screening. So, you know, have Samsung, this is Jay, he's actually from Samsung corporate, and Jackson Walker. You guys have tested.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that would be, that would always be a part of the hiring process.
Underically, no.
And that's from start to finish, we're talking to the temporary workers that come in to construct through the.
Yeah, that would go same.
Absolutely. I mean, again, what you're bringing in is reputable. When we're looking at the scale of this, investment of hundreds of millions of dollars, right? Just how we look at if we're gonna go get a car loan from a local lender and the way that they look at us, even on an amount of fifty thousand dollars. Imagine the checks and the balances and the reviews that are necessary to go in order to finance a five hundred million dollar project. So we go above and beyond in every way that we can, obviously to protect the community, to protect Samsung's investment, right? And to ensure that this is a successful project, yeah.
And not just for y'all, but like when we interviewed architects from the bond, you know, that's one of their big sales is, is not only them, but the contractors they hire, you know, even that architect they interview. So do y'all go through, like, you're gonna have to hire, you know, people that bring rock in, that do different things? How do y'all vet those folks?
Through, I mean, there's a general contractor, just like you'd use for these, what we call WPC contractor, the peckles of the world, some of the largest infrastructure companies in the world are the ones that have the capability of building a project like this. And so they bring in subcontractors as well as part of their process. We have to vet that what their sub-vetting process is sufficient for our standards as well. But again, you have all of these people with some of the biggest, you know, most, you know, successful companies in the world and they wouldn't have been successful if they don't walk through the checks that you're mentioning here, even all the way down to the subcontractor level.
One other, before I get this off of my screen here and scroll down. Will the roads used be made wide enough for local traffic to pass delivery vehicles and be repaired after the project is finished? And where does that money come from? Are roads going to be made at least eighteen feet wide, talking about like the county roads? The answer got from Stockyards is we will work closely with Franklin County to be good steward of the roads and bridges we use during the construction and we will cover the cost of any road upgrades needed to accommodate construction staff. Solar projects also require little maintenance once installed, so they won't attract lots of traffic after construction. Instead, we will work Franklin County on road expansion requirements as needed. Funds used to repair road upgrades are provided by NL and I'm guessing y'all have the same. But like, you know, when I talk about a road, we have, I live out in the country and I travel these roads, I travel a lot of other roads. We have better roads in Franklin County than most counties, any county that I've been through. And if you come in here and you come in front of somebody's place and they have livestock and you lay down some rock road, it's gonna be a problem, so how is that addressed?
Yeah, I mean, the same way. I mean, they made mention of working with Franklin County on what's called a road use agreement. So before construction starts, we survey the roads. We see what county roads we're gonna be using ingress and egress for all the, you know, primary contractors and subcontractors for all the things coming in. We understand that inevitably, there's gonna be a truck that's gonna be going down a road when somebody else is going the other way and there's gonna be dust kicked up. There are certain things that we aren't going to be preventing, but everything that we can, we are going to try to go above and beyond to do so. So, and the way that we are gonna do that with Franklin County, it's not an abatement, it's just a road use agreement so that they understand the protections that the community has should something get damaged. Okay, where are those funds? We're posting bonds in order to assure that those can get repaired, right? And all of these things in place, the county and the project will be better protected within this agreement so everybody knows the commitment, right, that each project is making to take care of the roads.
I could add a little bit to that too, just from our South Tillo project. You know, we do have a road maintenance agreement with Franklin County, actually, for 1018 out there, you know, around that county line. They own a portion of that, you know? We went through the process with, you know, Commissioner Cooper and Judge Lee and, you know, we brought it in front of the court. We also provided a two hundred thousand dollar bond just for that small little stretch of road. You know, we, a lot of our road upgrades happened on the Hopkins County side with Commissioner Bartley. He was great to work with. We had both, you know, both, in both instances, you know, that's where our engineering and construction permitting team comes in. We sat down with both of those commissioners, asked them, what are you looking for? What are you, you know, what are you trying to avoid here? And came up with a plan that worked for everyone, right? You know, both the county and signed up, signed off on that, right? It's a common, it's a common thing to put up letters of credit or bonds, right? Just for that, for that money to be there. You know, a lot of times the county does wanna do that work themselves because they think that they can do it better, which is great, right? And we're there to help supply whatever funding we need there. I always tell the, you know, commissioners I work with, and I'm sure Samsung's the same way, you know, I'm just a phone call away, let me know if something comes up, we'll get it squared away. You know, Commissioner Bartley has definitely done that where maybe like a rogue truck, you know, has gone on the wrong road. He called me, we got taken care of, you know, an hour later, right? So all this, all this to say that we have these, you know, personable conversations with commissioners and judges to accommodate for the roads. This is a big part of the projects. We know that we're gonna be, you know, bringing in some heavy equipment and we wanna make sure that we're leaving roads, you know, how we found them. Now, I can't, I know there's been some issues in the county with some other developers. You know, definitely can't speak to how those conversations went. I can just speak to what happened in our South Tillo project, so. And I'm sure Samsung has some more conversations.
And we're, you know, it's not all about what is done. It's about, you know, these folks that are around this that aren't getting anything, maybe even being the car to pieces going down the road because it's gonna take a lot of rock trucks and different, it's gonna take a lot, y'all know that, but, you know, if I'm one of them, what do I do? You know, what am I getting out of this deal? My neighbor over here, and I'm telling this for the folks that are the landowners that are gonna be really, you know, it's not gonna be just we vote on this and if it passes, they're gonna be mad at us, the landowners, for a few days. This is, how long of a project to get through with y'all's maybe?
Takes about a year.
About a year? There's two projects, that's two years. How long is yours?
Ours is gonna take a year.
Gonna take a year? So I'm gonna say if it's a year, if that'd be great, but if it's two years, that's a long time for these folks to be displaced, you know? You have advantages of living in the country and disadvantages, but, you know, they're not out there to have a highway in their front yard. So, you know, they don't get a break on their electricity or, you know, a guarantee. I mean, when things go bad, we get electricity, you know, they're kind of the ones. It's because one of my questions was, and I'm skipping all around here, but, you know, I'm not gonna be seeking out a place next to South Tillo. You know, if I'm looking for a place, I'm gonna go somewhere else probably. But what are the folks that are around it, you know, what can we do to help them out? I know y'all probably can't ask for some of that, the school board, we can't really ask for some of that.
I can speak, you know, at least at that project, we did offer good neighbor agreements for being next, being adjacent to the project, right? We've talked with a few folks at this project, in this area too, about that. We definitely start getting those more into place as construction gets closer. But, you know, with the good neighbor agreement, at least from our standpoint, we do provide a vegetation buffer that, you know, we try to help maintain and then, you know, maybe a small monetary, you know, amount every year, right? For being next to the project and just try to help any concerns that they do have. So those are actually in place at our South Tillo project. You know, we've started having those conversations with folks out here. We like to provide those across the country because we know people do have concerns about that. And, you know, we haven't really, you know, we've done a lot of studies on this and haven't seen any property value decreases from us being next to them. We're very quiet. We're probably quieter than some of the kids rolling around mudding through the county roads, right? So there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we try to.
My kids didn't get to play outside for a year because y'all ran.
That's enough, you need to walk out now.
I'm waiting, but just so you know, my kids didn't.
I said walk out now!
No, absolutely. I mean, again, just echoing this, right? They're a little bit further along, vegetative screening, there's all of these things. Obviously, damage to somebody's car happens, we need to learn about it so that we can, you know, compensate them for any damage that our project caused during the construction progress, I mean, process. So again, all of those things are in place. We try to control everything that's within our control as well as our contractors, subcontractors. As far as the property value's concerned, I think, you know, everybody here maybe has that same feeling, like I wouldn't wanna live next to one, right, or whatever. But what we're actually seeing, and again, from, you know, academia studies from the University of North Carolina kind of studying property values around existing solar farms, we're not actually seeing that in property sales, right? Of values decreasing. So again, we can all have our own personal opinions of whether or not you would want to, but from a, you know, much larger scale, looking all the way across the country, the data isn't there supporting the increase in values.
We gotta tone it down in here, I know we're all busy a little bit, but I'm trying to make sure we get them on camera. So if we're making some noise out here, then we can't have, because a lot of folks that are probably having other obligations are gonna wanna come back and watch this on their, on the YouTube or whatever that it's on. So I'm trying to be quiet and be respectful to y'all too.
I couldn't hear him, what his answer was.
Okay, so we'll actually talk a little bit louder.
Sure. So again, kind of the last comment I made was regarding property values on surrounding, you know, surrounding a solar farm. Again, I think what I was commenting that, you know, a lot of people in here have that feeling, well, I wouldn't buy that piece of property that's next to a solar farm. But the University of North Carolina, they did a study, again, across the entire United States, tracking sales and they didn't find any discernible difference or drop in market values for sales that occurred near solar farms. So again, we can all have our personal opinions, but when you look at a lot of data all the way across the country, they didn't support that conclusion.
So all we have to say, would you answer the water question and NL or if I don't, the funds as well?
Absolutely. And, you know, again, we know that we went through there, the idea that we're washing panels every two hours all throughout the year is just a myth, right? Obviously, the answer truly, the amount of water that we could use to wash the panels on an annual basis is absolutely none, right? We talked about how much rain you get, we know we never get enough as we want and all of those types of considerations. But under the assumption that we, let's say, wash the panels once a year, right? If we wash the panels once a year, that's gonna take, what we calculated, about a million gallons of water to do, right? For our facility. But in comparison, an average household here in Texas uses ninety thousand gallons. So that's just eleven households worth of water to wash it once. So the scale in which, I think Zach brought up another example, the scale in which water is used by a solar farm is the smallest amount as compared to any other form of power generation, right? You might like natural gas-fired power plants, they use a ton of water to generate electricity, right? They have to have their own lakes in order to have active cooling for that. Again, and all of the above approach works, but the idea that solar farms use an inordinate amount of water is just not true, so.
And that's not now or ever, not five years down the road or?
If anything, it's gonna even get more efficient. Samsung's using some robotic cleaning solutions as well, right? Where it's, that they can even do it at night, right? Small robots doing it even using less water than what is even required now. So actually, what we expect to see is, you know, the industry continues to evolve. This is gonna change less, it's gonna get even more efficient, yes, sir.
Five or ten years, you're not gonna say, hey, we gotta start washing it. They're not as efficient as they were when we first put them in, but they would be if we washed them. There will be none of that.
No, and we're even rejecting it, again, if that one wash a year needed to occur, we're not gonna be using any local sources. So we would probably pay some, pay some water company to bring in a new truck.
So whenever y'all put in a water tap to fix facilities, it's just gonna be like standard household water tap for your office. You gotta flush the toilet and wash your hands.
Yeah, we'll need some plumbing for the O and N building, that kind of stuff.
Two-inch water main going into your facility or five-inch or anything like that.
I think there was a couple other comments, again, kind of how it's gonna benefit anybody else here. We said, where's the power gonna go, right, those decisions? Again, that decision isn't made by Samsung, it's not made by NL, it's not made by any of these, right? Troy's gonna do things, and electrons go where electrons go, right? Where there's demand for that power is where most of that power is gonna go. So as you know, there could be some of that power being used here in Franklin County, but as he mentioned, you know, there's a whole lot more people in Dallas and there's a whole lot more people in Houston. So naturally, more of the energy is going to go there. But how it benefits us, we mentioned Winterstorm Yuri and all of these things. Again, I mentioned the all of the above approach. The more sources of generation that we have, the more sources of energy storage that we have, all of those things building more robust grid to help prevent something like what happened in Yuri story happen again. So again, while we can't necessarily say when you flip the light in your living room that that, you know, energy is coming directly from lupus solar, we know that the ability for you to flick that light on overall is better supported because lupus solar was built. Then on top of that, again, we mentioned some INS tax rates, right? How is this gonna benefit everybody? Literally, if you are a taxpayer in Mount Vernon ISD and this project gets built. I think one of the other people made a comment that, okay, even if they pay this bond off, there's gonna be another bond after, there's gonna be another bond after, there's gonna be another one. That very well could be the case, right? But with hundreds of millions of dollars more on the tax roll, what that does is the solar farms pay the majority of those bonds, not the individual taxpayers here. Now, they could choose to float a new bond, or even if the existing bonds were in place, but all of these projects were built. What we see in many cases in similar school districts across the state with, you know, small to medium-sized tax bases with large investment, that allows school boards to cut the existing tax rates on every taxpayer here. Now, we don't have the numbers to quantify it, that's not a decision that they may not be making today. But the idea that, again, if the incentive is granted, it does not affect, we always pay full taxes on the debt service rate. And because we do that, that means you, individual taxpayers, may pay less to them because we are carrying most of the bill. So again, that's easier to show with numbers. I know that they're, they have, they hire financial consultants and counsel to walk them through those decisions. Those could be some things in a future meeting we could share. But again, a tangible way that these projects could benefit you, even if you're sitting next to it or you're halfway across the county, but you're paying taxes in Mount Vernon ISD, these projects could allow you to write a smaller check every single year. So that was one other kind of comment that I had on kind of general benefits.
So how the other projects, does Samsung have this thing?
I think they're starting construction on their first one here soon, right?
Yeah, we're expecting to have one coming next year.
And where is it located?
What did that say?
Where?
Myland County.
Said, said it's like a period out there. Say that again.
Myland County.
Myland County.
M-I-L-A-N.
In May. What was the question? Did you hear the question? Y'all hear the question? Where, where, do they have any other projects in the state, in Texas? They said they're starting one in May, Myland County.
It's not owned by Samsung right now, but it was developed by Samsung.
It was developed, got Samsung?
Yes.
Will this project in this area be owned by Samsung or be subbed out?
There'll be a strategic decision at the later stage, but we are seriously considering to having one and also to develop and invest it by other investors.
See if I can word this right. My question was, how are we to be sure the school will receive funds after a 313 is agreed to bond? And that's, you know, I mean, I know you get some upfront, and I'd like to get it all upfront and I would like to negotiate and talk about that. But, you know, is there something, and we'll be consulting with lawyers on that later on, but if we can't get all of our money upfront, I know Samsung's pretty big, y'all sell out. Or, and you know, you're a, whatever it is in here that you talked about, your company, you know, your reputable company. But if you go bad in five years and we have a ten-year, you know, agreement with you, a fifteen-year school, are we out? Are those landowners out? If, if in, kind of to co-tell on that too, if we change some leadership in Washington and this solar deal kinda goes to the wayside in five or eight years, do the landowners, do they get their money upfront? Or are they paid out, I guess, for those thirty years? What happens?
Yeah, so I mean, there's legal protections, just like anything. I mean, I can, we can focus mainly on the school district one and your council can probably answer better, but this is a binding legal document, right? That isn't just being entered into willy-nilly, right? It's a very, very public process, applications reviewed by the comptroller to ensure it complies with state statute. But ultimately, it results again in a binding legal document that's not only reviewed by our legal counsel, but the school district's counsel is reviewed by the Texas comptroller as well. And within that document affords all of the legal protections should there be some breach of the agreement. And similar things can be said about lease agreements with landowners as well.
But if I reckon you have no money.
As far as administrations go, you know, I can just speak on, you know, during when Trump was in office, right? We had some of our best years during that. So it's really not an administration by administration issue, right? You know, solar has come so far, it's so cost-effective, it's competing, driving natural gas down, oil, everything. You know, solar has come so far, it's so cost-effective, it's competing, driving natural gas down, oil, everything else, right? So there's, I would, I would not consider that as a, as an issue, you know? If admin, admin, admin change, you know, they change all the time, right? So, but like I mentioned, we had some of our best years under the Trump era.
Or do you have any other questions for?
Oh, I was just, Zach spoke a lot, can y'all say personally, like with the fires and working with the community, and like what is y'all's plan? Do y'all do that, and do y'all put in the same kind of environmental studies? Is it, you know, we heard from him, can y'all say too, what goes into this project as far as maybe the community is taking care of it?
Sure. I think the main point that Zach was mentioning is that what the needs of that particular community from one solar farm or one battery facility compared to the next can be different. We could go build a battery facility in Dallas County, and they may have already had that training and all the materials and other things that they would need to in the case that there was some sort of event. That's, may not be the case here, I know that there was somebody from the volunteer fire department that came here to spoke. So the plan is, is obviously, right, to go above and beyond in any way that we can, to plan for very, very rare, inevitably, I mean, you know, instances that probably will never occur, but we have to be prepared for them anyways. But what that knowledge is, what their preparedness for it is, it differs. But our goal is to work with them so they are prepared, even in that very rare, very, very rare instance that there was some sort of failure.
Have y'all gotten equipment before to different communities, or I guess y'all haven't done it in Texas yet? Like have y'all worked with counties in doing so?
Yes. For example, the one in Mylum County, Samsung working with their volunteer fire department, same as Zach said, to provide equipment, training, special funding to provide the services.
If y'all don't know, there's restaurants down this hall, and there's restaurants down this hall. We've been here for a little while now, so you need to excuse yourself for that. There's down here on the left, or down here on the left also, on that, which has got a little more, more questions to go.
So let me follow, I think what she has heard, right, maybe I didn't. But Zach spoke in regard to the, to their project that a, that a environmental study is taking place? Have y'all, has that taken place with this project yet? It's underway currently?
Yes, sir.
Other questions for members?
Have you got something? Yeah, we'll do some more questions, if you got something, y'all. This is a good time to provide some information.
You know, let me go through, kind of see. Oh, I think there was some question about.
Here's a question, why don't they build solar farms closer to the metro areas?
They can, right? But available land is one of the biggest considerations, right? Access to transmission, available lands, you know, all of those types of things. And that gets harder and harder to do the closer you get into metro areas.
Like I mentioned, we have one in Kaufman County, right? Which is right outside.
What about like Kaufman County, forty, went from, I think, twelve to sixteen schools in a school year, and I've been to some of those schools, why don't they put other panels on top of those schools or on top of, you know, four houses that's going up?
That's up to, that's up to them, I can't speak to that, right? So that's each school's personal reference, right?
There's not really a good answer on that.
Well, it's not up to us, right? It's up to the, it's up to the, we're not, we're not a residential.
Yeah, that would be your decision as a board if we.
Yeah, we're not a residential solar company, right? So we don't, we don't have, we don't put up panels on rooftops, so.
So another benefit we'll talk about is that, the question I was posed is how many people the project employs, will it have benefits and benefits? Both these projects, what was put into the three thirteen agreements was statutory, committing to one job, right? And that's basically, that is an industry standard, renewable projects in general, there isn't many moving parts with a solar facility. You simply don't need a ton of people to be working. It's not a manufacturing facility where you've got a manufacturing line, you need two hundred people. No, these, once they're built and the construction is, is complete, those two hundred and fifty construction workers, yes, they do leave, right? But then you will have some full-time employees. Samsung anticipates probably, even though in, in the application they commit to one job, they're forecasting maybe having five jobs available, that like seventy-five thousand dollars or more in, in wages, right? It's, it's competitive wages for these types of projects. And that's, it's, we put in there the, the two jobs, that's the minimum that they commit right now, but they anticipate there could be more.
And just, and again, those notes in the applications, they're not caps, they're not maxims, right? The applications are set up to state minimums, right? So that's what it is. We anticipate there could be more, but what is the minimum requirement for this, for a three thirteen application? It's these numbers, right?
That's the same with the salary as well. So, you know, everyone pays competitive rates to their technicians, managers, things like that. You know, Samsung and Nell are definitely paying what, what things cost, right? You know, that's just what was set by the state comptroller's office as a minimum that you have to pay spokes.
And is there an employee on-site twenty-four hours a day?
Like I mentioned, for the battery storage, it's real-time monitoring, right? So we have folks on-site and off-site doing real-time monitoring. As far as, you know, solar projects go, you know, people do have lives, right? So, you know, they work normal business hours, we may have an afternoon crew, you know, that may stay a little bit longer than five, but, you know, we do wanna make sure we have a good work-life balance, you know, and not overworking our employees, which is your Samsung.
Well, and what I was getting at is if there's somebody there twenty-four hours, obviously, there would be more than one person.
Well, we do have security, we have, we have security, 'cause it is a generator, right? So, you know, it is connected to the power grid, has substations, which are, so we do have security that's there just to, you know, look after the, the facility, you know, in different shifts, things like that. As far as technicians, managers, you know, assistant managers, things like that, it's just business, yeah, whatever, whatever they are working. But we, there is security, 'cause it is a generator for, for cotton, so.
Guys, anything else you wanna share with the board?
No, like I said, you know, we've been a part of this, you know, we've been, whether it's representing renewable facilities and petrochemical facilities via this value limitation agreement process, going back from me to since two thousand nine, right? And again, we have seen this as one of the best ways, a very, very public process for constituents to learn about new possible developments, but also school districts to participate, get access to money that they normally can't. And so, you know, we hope to obviously continue that relationship, and we've seen it be very fruitful over the years.
You got more members, anything else for them? Okay, all right, thank you. Shelly and Rick, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask you to step up just a second, I would like to get your, since this is for informational purposes, you would step up just a second to answer a question for us? And I think answer a question for the public as well. If I read correctly in the paper today, I think our board, and I think a statement was made, either directly or indirectly, that this board has possibly taken a bribe in regard to these projects. And I'm, I'm reading into the, maybe the statement, that they're regarding the seventy-five thousand dollars that each company had to put forward with application process. So would you please explain what that seventy-five thousand dollars is used for?
So the, the application is used to pay the school district's costs associated with doing the due diligence for these projects. So all of that money goes solely to pay for your consultants and your legal fees to, to go through and analyze and make sure that, that the application is correct, that it's beneficial to the school district, and to produce your findings, fact, and analysis. It is not, it's clearly by law not a bribe.
So as well, is any of that seventy-five thousand dollars left over that the school gets back or receives in their fund balance?
No.
So it is a strict flow-through from the company that goes along with the application process?
And the reason why is because by the district paying the application cost, that means that our work as your consultants, we owe a fiduciary duty to, to the school district. We have no duty, nor do we want any duty to the, to Samsung or to the other applicants. And so that way, by the money coming from the, from the district, we have a strict duty to the district itself, and that's why it's done that.
And that money also affords the district to retain counsel without using your general funds for that purpose?
But it was a little disheartening for sure to read in the paper that we had neighbors in our county that thought that this group of people right here were, were taking bribes to do something, that they would print it in the paper. So thank you for sharing that, for making that public here tonight, thank you.
In addition, you have, you have in your board's policy procedures and laws that prevent you from, from doing that very thing. So, so you, you, you take your responsibilities seriously and you do not do illegal activity in regard to this, these regulations.
Okay, in regard to, I think something else was brought up, let's go ahead and talk about that just a little bit. In regard to the three thirteen applications that were brought forward, in the, in the law requirements in the three thirteen, regarding number of jobs and some things like that, as you heard were mentioned, that the board was amiss, and maybe the word was not amiss, something exactly was stated, that we were, what was the word being used?
That, that you, you, essentially, you violated the law by, by not following the requirement as to the number of jobs. And at, and at this stage, number one, the district has been asked by the applicants to, to waive a certain amount of the ten job requirements, but the district hasn't made a decision regarding that.
But is that allowable by law?
But it is, it is allowable by law, and again, this, the statute itself is a one-size-fits-all for all possible projects, whether it's nuclear energy, a manufacturing facility, renewable projects, all of these things. And so the ten job, the ten number of job requirements is, is there mainly because of manufacturing projects. They generate a lot of jobs. These renewable, solar projects, they don't require that amount, amount of jobs. And it is allowed by law to, and is, is the standard throughout the state as well as other places to agree to waive the jobs down to like two jobs, one or two jobs. And, and again, the real benefit is, is coming from the investment and the statutory revenue generated, not really from, from jobs. And you really are not getting that much of additional benefit by having ten jobs instead of two jobs. There's not a real monetary significance to the district, to the community, it's a hole by waiving that. It could choose to do so, 'cause you haven't made that decision yet.
Yeah, we had a public speaker, and we're gonna get a lot of stuff that we have to have counsel on, but you know, it was mentioned about lawsuits, jail time, you know, we're gonna get a lot of bluffs and different things, so that's why we're asking some of these questions, you know, and we expect y'all to keep us out of the binds, but sometimes we have to be very transparent while he's asking these questions up here. 'Cause if I'm on the others, if I'm on the opposite side of it, I'm gonna, you know, there are two good sides to argue here. From on the opposite side, I'm gonna come up with what I can. And we're the ones that need to be bluffed right now, and the voting doesn't, for me, like, so. Are we liable as board members for anything that's taking place so far?
You have not, nothing, I'm not aware of anything at this stage in terms of what y'all have done related to the applications, nor do I anticipate anything coming up that would, that would put the district in a position of violating the law. But that's what we're here for, is to make sure that you follow in the law and to represent your interests.
Is there a law that says that we can or can't negotiate things? Like, what if I want a million dollars per fire department, the first, you know, upfront, and then I pledge a million dollars for the next five years? Can the school board negotiate that?
No, that's, that is between the company and the county and the fire departments, and, and those parties. What, all you are asked to do and all that you have the authority to do is to agree or not agree to a value limitation.
Can that be done before we accept the, the, no, we've approved the application, we've accepted it, but we haven't approved it, right?
That's right, that's right. By accepting it, you, you're not bound to make any decision.
So, but can the county negotiate something like that with these companies before we approve it?
I'm sure they can, if, if they choose.
Because I've told the county doesn't vote on certain things until after the school board does, but, you know, these people that are here, myself, and board members, we wanna know, you know, I'm asking questions, what do we get? We don't get electricity out of, you know, electricity goes into the grid and it's out there, so it's nothing that we're getting out of that, but I'm just trying to figure out what can we as a board do to say, you know, if we agree with this, but what can we do to say to these people out here that we're trying to take care of you? We're not just looking out for our kids, we're trying to take care of you. What, what can we legally do? And I know that, you know, there's probably some stuff in there, and I've, I've asked those questions, and I kinda know, but I want the public to know, can we, or who does, who can start some negotiations to make this deal? Say, you know what, I don't really want it, I sure don't wanna look at it, but if they come, this is gonna be took care of. This guy right up here that comes to my place probably once every two years and fights a fire, or these folks that are first responders that are, you know, if my, one of my kids or my wife has a car wreck and they're in the ditch, are the first ones there, what can I do to take care of them? 'Cause they're the ones out there taking care of me and my family, and also, you know, I wanna take care of them and their families. So what can we negotiate?
So, so first of all, by doing what you're doing and having this meeting and raising these concerns, you're telling these applicants what, what is expected of them with regard to, in, in this community. So, so I, I think that that's the first thing. But in terms of, of, you know, with this, with this volunteer fire department, I mean, if, if, if they, whoever their responsible parties are that negotiate those deals, they should start talking to these people tomorrow about, about putting that training in place. And it's up to, it's up to them to do that, and certainly, this is an encouraging process for that to happen. But the, the school district has a certain amount of authority with regard to what you have jurisdiction over, what you can agree to and what you can't. And, and most of those things are outside your authority to, to negotiate as it relates to somebody else's land or another governmental entity's needs and responsibilities. They have to do that themselves, you can't do it for, when you have the authority to do it for them. But I think by raising the concern and showing that, that the district is concerned about this issue despite the fact that it's not within your purview making decisions, you're encouraging them to be good stewards and then end to, to do those things. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, so pretty much we can't do anything, somebody else will answer it again. 'Cause you know, to Ms. Olson, is that right? You know, she, she made a pretty good point earlier of, you know, she's gonna say, y'all don't, these companies don't care at different things, and I know there's, y'all do projects all over, but we're not South Hilla or Cunningham, we're Kaufman, it's Franklin County, and we're gonna do a, you know, we want a whole lot more before this goes through than what these other counties would probably ask for. I do, because I, I want it to be, you know, if it's an eyesore, I want it to be, I'm trying to be pretty transparent here, but I want it to be worth that eyesore, what these people are gonna have to go through in these two or three years, and seeing the blinking lights at night, hearing the construction and the, and the dust and all, is... But you're telling me, I guess, that's not in my reins to be able to ask any of that?
And specifically, in addition to that, the district cannot negotiate a benefit above what the statutory maxims are within the region. So you're also restricted in terms of how much, in terms of monetary value to the, to the, to the district. But with regard to firefighting, your example here, I mean, that's, that's, you're, you're, you don't provide firefighting services. It's not your responsibility to make sure that it's, that the training is, is done, and so you, you just don't have the authority. I mean, but I, like I said, by you. I mean, but I, like I said, by you raising the concern and, and these applicants are saying that they go to the fire departments and they provide what they need, I, I, you're, you're raising the issue. But can you go out and negotiate something special? Not as a school district, no.
See, that puts, that puts us in a bad spot. We can't negotiate that, but if we say, yes, they come, and we say, no, they don't come. So, that puts me in a pretty bad spot here, you know what I mean? Because you companies, I'm trying to get something for my people, and which the school are my, is my people, but these other folks are my people also. So, that's, that's why I'm so torn right now, is because, you know, all of you in here, put yourself in our shoes. You know, it's a pretty tough shoe to be in right now, 'cause we have some different responsibilities. And I'm just thinking out loud and talking out loud while we're in here, that's why I'm telling you, we hear your concerns. It's very beneficial to different things. You know, I see the signs you're holding up, but every one of you in here, or all of these board members in here on social media, and we know some of you fought very hard, pretty hard, to make sure we didn't get this bond passed. You know, if we had different, if they fought as hard to help us improve the school as they did against us, and I understand some of these things, but it would be different, but we're in a pretty good spot. That's why Samsung and NNL, you know, why I'm trying to see, what can we get? Go big or go home is how I look at this stuff. How, you know, how do we, I know you set the standards, you know, when you do this for Franklin County, you gotta do it for somebody else, but, but if it's out of our hands, then it's out of our hands.
Okay, thank you, thank y'all for answering questions.
You bet.
Dr. Branstrom, are you still there with us?
Sure am.
Okay, great, thank you for being with us in that. Would you please share a little information about yourself? And then we're gonna give you the opportunity to share with us in regards to, I think you sent us a presentation that you'll share with us in regard to solar energy?
Uh, do you wanna put the, the presentation on the screen? I, I don't think I can share my screen.
I have it. It's on the, it's on down the screen.
Okay, yes, yes, I see it.
Hang on a second, I'm gonna show it on the screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes, yes, now all good. So, if you could just go to the first slide, then, then I'll get started.
Just tell us about the episode. Okay, we're there. Okay.
All right, so on the, on the screen, I still see all of them rather than just the first one.
Uh, you don't, you just see, uh, you don't see the first slide?
Uh, I do, if I look at, um, yeah, let me just see what I'm, I, I, I think the first slide should just be, the title and my name and title.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, there, there we go, thank you, yes. Okay, there we go, yeah, now I can see it on the screen. Well, anyway, thanks a lot for, um, for, for the invitation. And I just would like to, um, to clarify one thing that I heard, heard, uh, a little earlier, and, and that is to clarify that I am not a consultant, right? I'm not hired or paid by anyone in the room. I get one salary and it's, um, thanks to the fabulous and fantastic Texas A&amp;M University, where I've worked for almost 20 years. And I, and, and so that, and, uh, my connection to this is the fact that I teach a class called Geography of Energy. I've taught it for quite some time. I also do research in the area of, uh, of impacts of, of wind power on communities. And I've also studied, uh, and, and so here, I know, I am not making any claims to be an expert on the impacts of utility scale, L solar PV, but I do have, um, the ability to read the scientific literature and to synthesize it and to make certain claims, uh, about kind of what we know. And, and of course, I'm doing this, uh, because I include this kind of material in the class that I teach to undergraduates that I have taught for a while, and without any reference to a particular, uh, project, a particular solar project. Uh, so if we get, uh, an, uh, another thing about my title is I'm responsible for undergraduate education in a, in a fairly large college of arts and sciences that encompass everything from math and physics to, um, English and history. So, if you could go to the second, uh, slide, please. Okay, so my, in terms of my educational background, it's in, uh, geography from Texas A&amp;M for coming close to, to, to 20 years. And, uh, and Fantasie University, that's been very good to me and, and my career as an academic. I've been teaching geography of energy for several years, and that's kind of where this material comes from. You know, I did not, you know, what I do here is something that I, I talk to undergraduates about all the time, who, who, who are interested in what are the benefits of solar, what are the benefits of wind, what are the drawbacks and so forth. And indeed, one of the big themes about any energy topic is that there are a, a lot of trade-offs between, you know, as individuals and, and some of the consequences, because you don't get energy for free. You have to build structures and you have to build systems to be able to harness, whether it's fossil fuels or, or solar radiation or, or the wind resource. So, anyway, my, my research has been on wind power in, in West Texas, where I studied in Nolan, Taylor County, some of the first places in Texas to, to receive large-scale wind operations. And I've studied, uh, what the stakeholders there think about wind power, wind energy, wind farms. And I've also studied the distribution of royalties among, uh, among the wind, among the, the landowners who have received wind on their properties. And I've studied wind power in Brazil, where it's a, they have a very, very different context, mainly because, uh, land tenure or land ownership is unclear in, in many cases. Uh, not the case in Texas, of course, but in, in Brazil and in many parts of the developing world, there are some conflicts because of, of insecure land title and land tenure. So, and it sounds very strange to an audience in, I'm, you know, near the metroplex, that it can be unclear who owns what, but this is indeed the case in many parts of the developing world. Anyway, this very short presentation, I'll just be synthesizing what we know in the peer-reviewed scientific literature about environmental impacts. And as I emphasized earlier, this is not about a particular utility-scale solar PV site or proposal. So, the next slide, uh, shows just an example of what some of this peer-reviewed literature is and where it's published, remember that? So, it, as scientists, we have a fairly rigorous process of peer review when we try to get, uh, some of our, our, our findings and our results into the, into the academic literature. Uh, again, just a sampling of, of these, of, of what I've been, the next slide, please. All right, this, uh, this aims to define what it is that we're talking about. And I think this is pretty important to, as a first principle in trying to understand what's, uh, what's out there on the internet and the literature. And, and we're talking here about utility-scale solar PV, which is, has a certain capacity. We're not talking about concentrating solar or CSP, which is a, basically a broad array of mirrors that concentrate solar radiation onto a particular point to heat, uh, to heat a substance that then will generate steam and, and so forth. And certainly, we're not talking about decentralized or rooftop solar, right? These are three different things that shouldn't be confused with one another. Uh, I suppose one could say that analogy as utility-scale solar, but decentralized solar, of course, feeds the, uh, household or the building first and then distributes to the grid, where utility-scale solar distributes to the, to the grid. What I did not do here is to, is to put any information about, that's something that we're seeing relatively recently in the United States. Improves gets more cost-effective as we see, uh, and this is also an adjustment to certain market conditions where it can be very, take any more lucrative to store the energy and release it in batteries than to, than to just deal with the intimate nature of, of solar, which is, it's, works when the sun's up and not when the sun's down, right? So, that is not part of this, and, and I did, just simply didn't have a chance to do any synthesis of, of, of that. So, what do we know? We know that, as a second big principle, we know that energies, any, any energy system has impacts that are potential, uh, that are eventually observable. They're direct and, and effect, and indirect. And this goes for everything, of course, from nuclear, hydro to coal, natural gas and so forth. So, solar is, of course, not, um, immune, or it does not escape this basic principle of any energy system, that it does have, have impacts. Uh, we also, I think another point here is that it's important to identify what are modeled or predicted impact, compared to, uh, impacts. And, and what we, and, and the literature is, 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 uh, is a mixture of models that predict what we, and other kind of, you know, foundational sciences. Uh, but it's also based on the very, uh, messy and complicated process of making direct measurements about direct and indirect impacts of solar. Uh, and again, and any, anything you read on the internet or a study that claims to be a study should be filtered through this lens of, are they modeling something or have they, effectively measured, uh, something? And then that leads to the next point of, of how do we know what we know? And, and we have a, a certain amount of studies that are what's called observational. In other words, these are scientists who go to sites of, of solar PV and make measurements in those sites. These are expensive, time-consuming, very difficult studies to do. Then there's a different kind of difficult study, which are the modeling ones, and that is that you make certain assumptions about the way the world works based on solar rate, uh, issue, and the behavior of animals, weed growth, whatever. Take your variable and you develop a model that helps you make predictions. So, so all of this is to say that it's important when, when you come across facts, alleged facts out there on the internet and the large, so, so, that you apply a handful of principles, right? What solar system are they talking about? Uh, is there any kind of suggestion that there are no impacts? Because that's, of course, untrue. Uh, but then are there, are there modeled or predicted or actual empirically measured outcomes in an observational setting, or are they purely modeling? And that's not to say that modeling is better or worse, or observational is better or worse, but this is just about how we know what we know and, and, and what it is that we, that we know. Right? The next slide tries to provide you with a kind of, uh, a grid or a matrix for thinking about, uh, what utility-scale solar PV means in terms of the environment. This is, this is nothing about the social aspects or the grid stability or anything like that. This is simply about the, which are, which are significant, but I didn't have, uh, the ability to, to put all of that together for a short presentation. But what we know is that there's three basic stages for PV construction, and I think there are good questions that can be asked of each of these, uh, based, right? So, in other words, to not kind of break, to not, um, consider the solar project as one massive kind of entity, but rather to think about what it means in terms of impacts at these three different stages. And the three different stages, of course, have happened in, in very different moments or periods, right? The construction phase is relatively short, right? And it, of course, involves interventions in the environment for the construction of roads, perhaps, or not, right? That depends, that's a, a point that you can use to evaluate any proposal, is what kind of road construction? Where is the transmission going to be based and where the substations? And of course, for this project, for, for a project that involves batteries, then it's like, well, where are the batteries going to be located? Well, we also know that there's vehicular activity at, at this stage and all subsequent, uh, stages, and we know that there is going to be a certain amount of surface vegetation or so forth, right, to make the site ready. And these can be, these are going to be different at the operation phase, which obviously is going to last a lot longer, right? Perhaps 20, 30 years or more, depending on the projected lifespan and so forth. And at that point, uh, something to consider is the overall footprint of the PV array or farms and, and so forth. There's still vehicular activity, although substantially less than at the, at the construction phase. And there is, of course, maintenance for the site and, and panel washing, right? Some of these questions I've heard, um, you know, since, since the start of this a couple of hours ago, that were, that were raised. And these are good questions to ask of the operation phases. Well, what is your protocol for vehicle activity? What's the protocol for the maintenance of the site and the panel washing and so forth? And then there is the decommission phase, which of course is in some future time horizon when PV is removed or, or replaced. Uh, perhaps the site is restored, or perhaps it's, it's put into a different use. And, and then there is, uh, an off-site, end-of-life PV disposal. This last one here, I just need to spend a little bit of time on, uh, note, noting that, that the, that the disposal of the, of PV does not appear to happen at the site. It happens in a manufacturing or recycling facility where, with proper worker protections, uh, there can be safe disposal of, of the metals inside the panels, which in turn are protected by that tempered glass that, that the industry, uh, project developers and managers talked about. So, for each of these, there's a clear, uh, there are some potential effects, of course. That's, you know, any way of generating energy has these. And there are, of course, in, in a responsible society like ours, there are ways to mitigate that effect. And, and, and some of the mitigation, uh, things are, are in that last column where there are washing protocols, right? What are those, what do those look like? Uh, is there a project layout that is amenable to, in terms of avoiding landscape fragmentation? That is, if you're interested in, in, uh, in, in the way that animals and, and pollinators, insects and so forth might use that site? And what kind of dust protection mitigation is there? Which, of course, is more, far more important in arid and semi-arid environments than, than, than in more, more humid environments. Light and noise pollution, that's another issue, of course, that can be mitigated with a certain kind of project layout that is thoughtful and, of course, aims to, uh, to, to reduce those, those impacts. If we could go to the next slide, I've tried to summarize for you some of what, of what we know. Uh, that's, uh, the other way, sorry. Or I, I think I have, yes, yes. So, so what we know is that, is that at the manufacturing stage of PV, there are, there is potential for toxic exposure for the workers in manufacturing facilities that do not take proper precautions for their workers. This exposure, we do not think extends to the site of installation, right? So, so I think, so yes, there is potential toxic exposure, but norm, but that does not appear to happen at the PV site. It appears to be something that could happen, depending on the right, on, on, on worker safety protocols at the manufacturing facility and at the, at the decommissioning site. But those are norm, those are not normally places where the, where, where solar is installed. There's a, uh, this is gonna sound very funny, very strange, but there is a vigorous scientific debate about the microclimate effects. Uh, so what this means is that scientists are not really sure what exactly is the microclimate effect. And this is because there are studies with some contradictory results about... And this is because there are studies with some contradictory results about, in terms of the observation of solar PV farms. And one of our problems is that most of the studies have happened in arid environments, where you have a lot more bare ground, right, a lot more bare ground soil. You have, you know, certain humidity, temperature characteristics that, of course, are not representative of every place that solar PV is being built. What is, I think, clear, right? So there's a debate about kind of what happens to surface air and soil temperatures. What is kind of more clear is that what matters a lot is what was the site like before solar PV was constructed? And in the scientific literature, we call those reference conditions, that is, pre-solar form. And it also matters what is the surrounding land cover like, right? These things do indeed matter. And so that's why it is not a clear-cut, single and simple answer about, well, what does happen to soil moisture? What happens to surface air in the immediate vicinity around a solar farm, right? There is still room for that science to develop. I think similar things can be said about what the literature says about biodiversity in terms of flora and fauna. And it depends on the lay, it depends on a lot, it depends on the layout of the solar farm. It depends on the species characteristics and how well they may adjust or adapt to the particular layout and the particular structure. It depends on, again, the reference conditions, that is, the conditions of the site before solar was built, because they're not all the same, right? There's wide variability in terms of the locations that are eventually used for solar. So the answer to two, I think, big questions, well, I'm not sure if I heard microclimate being talked about in the three-minute sessions. I did hear a little bit about biodiversity, but it's a big depends question, right? On what the layout of the site will be and what are the pre-solar farm conditions. One thing I did not have a chance to synthesize is an emerging area of trying to understand what is it that grows under solar PV in conditions that are not the desert, right? So in some ways, you know, studying what grows under solar PV in very arid environments is, let's just say, not exactly a terribly productive scientific endeavor compared to what grows under solar PV in areas where you get 20, 30 inches of rain a year. And that's, we just don't have enough knowledge about that. But that's, again, an area for, you know, to figure out in the future. The second-to-last point is about, is trying to put solar PV into context with other renewable generation types. So when we think about those types of generating electricity that don't generate the SOX and the NOX, right? The precursors, the smog, and air quality problems, those power generation types that don't give us mercury pollution and so forth, right? Those kinds of power generation types that don't give us greenhouse gas emissions. When we think about those, solar clearly gives, has what's called the smallest spatial footprint. In other words, it uses the least amount of land compared to competing renewable power generation types, right? So when we kind of compare kind of light with light, right? I mean, I think you can compare coal with natural gas, that's light with light, right? A small footprint, but you rely on basically an underground forest, you know, hundreds of millions of years ago. When you rely on the fluxes that nature gives us through wind and solar and the hydrologic cycle, hydro, we find that actual measurements, right, that we get a pretty efficient use of land for the amount of power that is being generated. And then the last point here in terms of a synthesis is that, I think, when we look broadly at all ways of generating electricity, we find significant social benefits, which basically means public, and this is about air quality impacts, which, of course, from solar, well, don't really exist, at least in any kind of comparable way with fossil fuel-based power generation. And then we have the environmental benefits in terms of, say, waste disposal, the way we extract coal or natural gas from the subsurface and so on. And the final slide gives you a handful of references to experts, people who are actively conducting research in the field of trying to understand what solar PV does or is doing to the environment in a broad kind of ecosystem science way. Again, just a handful of experts. I'll note that the second one, Greg Baron Gafford, is someone who has studied what's called agri-phytics for quite some time. That is, can crops be grown underneath solar PV? And if so, what's the productivity? What are the benefits to landowners, right? How can we have both happening in the same space? And then, again, a handful of other scholars who have studied different aspects of solar from different perspectives, ranging from social science to kind of the other sciences. So that's what I have for you. And again, to emphasize, I am not a consultant. This is kind of information that I regularly give to my undergraduate class at Texas A&amp;M, who take my Geography of Energy class. And with that, I think I will just end it right there and wish you all best wishes. I wish that I could have traveled from College Station to Franklin County and Mount Vernon, but that was a little far for me to do, you know, with family obligations and other duties at A&amp;M.
Dr. Branshman, thank you. We appreciate your time and sharing your review of the research with us tonight.
Does anybody have a picture of this for your studies? It'll be on the, you can watch the video, but some of these studies up here. We don't have much longer, because we just have a few action items, and we'll roll through them pretty quick. So thank y'all for being patient, and he did this on his own time, stayed up late, needed to talk to us about that. So let's see here, we'll move on to item four, discussion items.
Item five.
Item five, yes. Consider approval of the consent agenda. Back your board book here. Any questions on the consent agenda? Motion made by Josh, seconded by Robert, all four, 7-0 on that. Item six, our action item, consider approval of modified Saturday school compensation for 2022, 2023 on the staff and list.
Quickly, it was $75. We moved it to an hourly rate. That way, if we have a reduced, like maybe only two hours of Saturday school versus a four-hour window. If we have two teachers that want to work Saturday school instead of one teacher to divide that, we moved it to an hourly rate and increased it. So a teacher that works a four-hour window would earn $120 instead of the $75, which also winds up in our tutorial hourly rate.
Hey, is it hard to get anybody to put up here on Saturday?
Yes. Yes, hence the increase. Yes.
Any more questions on that? All right. Any motions? We approve the modified Saturday school compensation on 2022, 2023, staff and list.
Motion.
By Linda, seconded by Scott, all four, 7-0. Consider adopting MBISD resolution approving the investment policy strategies and investment officer training.
This is the review of our investment policy that we do every year. Nothing has changed since 2019, so it was in your packet to review. If you have any questions, I'd answer them, but it's all the same as last.
Any questions on that? Any motion for that? Motion made by Leanne.
Second.
Seconded by Linda, all four, 7-0. Item C, consider and approve extracurricular status request resolution for our 4-H organization, Dr. Sutherland.
Bring this to you tonight because we have, you've approved the one for Franklin County, but we do have some students who are transfer students to Mount Vernon, who live in Titus County, and they are a part of the Titus County 4-H organization. And so we're asking that you approve the, allow the, or to allow the extension for people from Titus County to be a part of the adjunct faculty as well, so those students can be a part of that and also that are in Titus County, not just Franklin County.
Okay. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brooks, all four, 7-0. Last one, consider approval of TIP spender national bus sales for purchase of two activity buses and two special ed buses.
We went out for RFQs, those have been presented to you in regard to where those came back. I'd like to say that there were buses left, but that was the issue I was running into. Of course, because of the cost of the bus, we couldn't do anything until we had a board meeting. At the time, they had 25 of these buses available. They have sold these buses now, and so the ones that I was wanting to make the recommendation for, they were 14-passenger buses. We were looking at getting two to be 14-passenger buses to be used for, considered to be activity buses. We were going to use two for special ed buses, because they had seats for 12 plus two wheelchairs. Those have since been sold, but we do still have a need. And we have a need for the transport of smaller groups of kids, whether it be kids in ag or other extracurricular things that we have, baseball teams, volleyball teams, when it's just one team and it's less than 14 students. And I would like to go ahead and make the recommendation, if you approve, and what we've done, where this money's coming from, we have designated fund balance for transportation purposes, and I'd like to use some fund balance to be able to do that. I'd like to go ahead, with your approval, I'd like to make the recommendation to go ahead with the Silsby Ford bid of $53,092.10 to go ahead and order or purchase two of the 2023 Ford Transit 14-passenger buses, or, excuse me, 14-passenger transit vehicles. Again, that bid price was $53,092.10. What that would allow us to do, that would allow us, again, to transport kids instead of having to use two Suburbans or a big yellow bus. Opportunities of students or transportation lists in 14 would allow us to use that.
What about the other ones in the future?
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to come back on that. Again, I was hoping, as of yesterday, when I talked to him, they had two. Talked to him today, they sold those two. He sent me a couple of emails. He has some different opportunities, but that's not what we've got RFQ. So I'll have to come back to you on that at later time.
So we're getting a time crunch on those, a lot of cost special meeting, that way we can get up here and get them Bob before they're gone.
And so with that, I mean, so the RFQ I put out was for basically, these were all less than 10,000 miles. There was a company that had purchased them pre-COVID, they didn't get to use them. National Bus Sales bought them from them, and that's why they have them available now, which was, again, good for us, but it was also good for everybody else. Another company that I know that does sales, use buses, contacted me and we had nothing available, and they said there is nothing available. Again, we just missed opportunity on that side of the night, but I would still like to make the recommendation for us to use some of that designated fund balance for the two 2013. Again, we'll place the order for those in here.
Do we need to specify if they're going to be activity or spin buses at this time?
No, these will only be activity buses. These will, these will, we will probably, we will have either wrapped or put to make sure they're designated Mount Vernon activity buses, the fans.
So the spin bus will be one way.
They will not be of a route.
Okay.
Correct.
So we need a motion to approve the TIP spender national bus sales for purchase of two activity buses. How much?
106, though.
Yeah.
Eight, seven, one, eight, four, total.
Yeah.
Motion made. Motion made.
Motion made by Linda. Seconded by?
Which is the $53,092.10 times two?
That's 106.
No, it's not through National. This is through Silsby. Yes, sorry. The recommendation is for a 2023 Transit 350 passenger, 148-inch long wheelbase, 15, count the drivers, 15 passengers, for a total price of $53,092.10 times two.
From Silsby?
From Silsby, yes.
The national buses were out, right?
Yeah, the national buses are not there now.
That was our original.
Yes. The purchase price times two.
Yeah, as printed in there under Silsby. Did you second that, Robert? Okay. Yeah.
Correct, correct. Again, it'll take some of the burden off our route buses, for sure.
Any further questions on that? Motion by Linda, seconded by Robert, all four, 7-0. Information to add on the steer right before we roll on, do we have any Roma totals?
I think the Roma total as of October 1st was 1572.
Where'd we start at, you remember?
September 1, we were still 1572. August 11th, we were 1495.
All right.
October 1st last year was 1522, so we're up 50 kids in.
Okay. At 8:24, the board convenes in a closed session for personnel matters pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551074, to discuss commercial or financial information regarding business prospects with which Mount Vernon ISD may conduct economic development negotiations pursuant to Texas Government Code 551087, and to consult with legal counsel as necessary to address legal concerns, implications, and questions regarding the post that give the items pursuant to Texas Government Code 551071. 9:57 PM, board convenes back into open session. Number 10, personnel report, we need to, do we have any?
We don't have any professional contracts. We do have one resignation to acknowledge, that is, Mr. Jesse Polo, who was the custodian supervisor. He resigned at the end of August, and after, I think he worked here for six years, or six years.
Okay.
The only thing, only one we have.
Okay. Any further business?
No, sir.
There's no further business, and we will adjourn the meeting at 9:58 PM.
Thank you.